Good morning. I'm there by the police stand so we can have an indication by Mr. Paul.
Let's pray. Kind heavenly Father, we are blessed to be in your presence this day. Lord, we thank you for our great county, Lord. We thank you for our citizens, Lord. Father, we just pray that you would watch over us today, Lord. Help us, guide us in our decisions. And what we do thank you again for this establishment that we call Gates County. Bless it, Lord. Make it safe. Well, we pray for this great nation and for our state in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our blessed legion is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call our regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners on March 2nd through 2016 to order. Our first item of business is approval of amendments from February 8th, 2016, and from February 15th, 2016, which was a work session. I have any corrections to the minutes as have been presented?
Madam Chairman, on the work session page 1821.
Do you mind emailing them please, sir, to Melissa to make it also easier since she will be transcribing from the good day?
Okay. You mentioned that was a workshop. And we have it as the Gates County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting.
And I had that as well highlighted, that the header of what needed to be changed.
On page 1821, first sentence says Chair Jordan should be Commissioner Jordan. And then on the page of 1821, where it says, "Commissioner Jordan feels thirty years is a bit much. Just have a type battle," or they have five to be filed after the date. That's it.
Okay. Do I hear any other corrections? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So move.
Okay, a motion to be made, second. All those in favor, approve the minutes as correctness, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Next item of business is agenda. Are there any additions or substitutions to my agenda?
Madam Chairman, we mentioned in the workshop that we would address making a motion, formally request to Gates County Board of Education, submit formal request to the Commissioners to fund the building of a new middle school. I would recommend that be added in section seven, item nine, under all provisions.
Okay. Request for Board of Education. Okay, any additions? Here nine, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as corrected or adjusted?
So move. Second.
Okay, a motion's been made, second, to approve the agenda as adjusted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. Next is uninited delegations. Is anyone signing in? We are moving along. Okay, uninited delegations. The first one is the senior center facilities report. I believe that is Mrs. Holly.
She had to go home for a minute. She'll be back shortly.
Okay, so we'll go to Gates County Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team report. Mrs. Holly. Nice to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Owens, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Felton, Commissioner Freeman, and also to the county manager. I have submitted all the Gates County Connected Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team annual report regarding child welfare issues in Gates County. This is my first time preparing the report, being the director of the Department of Social Services. However, as a child protective services supervisor for a little over fifteen years, I had the opportunity to attend the Connected Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team meetings. Of course, as being ongoing collaboration with many of the appointed members of the I pretty much followed the outline that was on file in the agency and updated the last annual report that was submitted in February of 2014 by the former ESS director. On page two, and I want to pass out a revised report.
Page two the only page to change?
I believe it is. On page two of the report is the table of contents. On page three, A should be next to members. I wanted to make sure that information lined up with the table of contents. And the one that was submitted, A was not next to members, and I wanted to align with the table of contents. And B should be next to purposes.
Correct.
And C is next to responsibilities on page four, correct? Also, on page four, the last sentence under P report to the Board of County Commissioners is stated in the February 2014 report that in January of each year, a copy of the report to the Board of County Commissioners would be sent to the division. And I believe the submission of this report had fallen somewhat through the cracks, reason being that in January, before the 31st of this year, I contacted the State CCPT Coordinator, and I never received a reply until February 17th. After, I had to consult with the section chief of the Child Welfare in North Carolina. That generated a phone call from the North Carolina Child Welfare Division of Social Services Director. So, in an email from the CCPT Coordinator in February, she stated that she had ordered to see two out of the 100 counties, which lets me know, well, you did never reply to me, and there's ninety-eight other counties out there that have not been submitting theirs. So, that's why Mrs. Hoffler probably received, how many from me? Three. Because I was trying to follow the lead from the former director's report when it said January, and I said, well, I definitely wanted to be in compliance. There's something supposed to be in your hands. You're going to have it. So that's why I submitted it. Then I submitted again with correction, and today I bring it to you with another correction, but I believe I go forward now. So, on page three, there's an overview of the North Carolina General Stages, reference to the establishment and procedures of the Connected Child Protection Team. And A, there's a list of the membership that is mandated by law, and I'm happy to say that we do have some of our team members here today, and I want to ask them to stand before the Gates County Child Protection Team members. Thank you for being here. And also, did I submit photos?
Did.
I did, okay. So, we took that photo last April. April being recognized as the Day of Child Abuse Month. Also, under A, the last paragraph talks about the Board of County Commissioners may appoint a maximum of five additional members to represent various county agencies or the community at large. Then B, there's the purpose. C, our responsibilities. Review active cases in which abuse, neglect, or dependency is found, and that are selected from categories defined by the team, brought for review at a specific request of a team member or brought for review at initiative of the director of the Department of Social Services. Talks about federal state laws requiring a citizen review panel be in place. The purpose of review shall be to, one, identify whether gaps and deficiencies exist within the Community Child Protection System, which have impact on the incidence of abuse, neglect, or dependency, or on child fatality to increase public awareness. Two, review of child fatalities. Three, report to the County Commissioners, and as I've already stated, that's why I was so persistent to get something to the County Commissioners by the end of January, at least somebody can say Gates County had something, even though it looked like a draft. On page five, local CCPTC/CFPT operational procedures, and then there's our membership, some names we have, of course, Melody Jordan, Evermore Hope Line. We have Gates County Regency Management, Evermore Regional Health Services. Karen Ridley also chairs the Community Child Fatality Prevention Team, Hope Illy, which used to be East Carolina Behavioral Health, is now Trillium Health Resources. She serves. You also have a GSS board member, and the person, Dr. Cleveland Hawkins. We have our Sheriff's Department, we have our social workers, of course, myself, we have Gates County Schools, we have our Galiu at Lyam, and those are some of the names that was already in the previous report, and I updated the quarter. Our meeting, and B, meeting frequency, place, date, and time, January, April, July, and October. Our next meeting will be April the 21st. Type and number of cases reviewed by the CCPTC/CFPT. In 2015, there was no child fatality referred to our team by the State of North Carolina to be reviewed in 2015, and that is good news. Community factors that impacted well-being of families and children, and we did discuss the 2014 report briefly in our January 21st CCPT meeting. Mental health issues and accessibility services to transportation continue to be problematic. It has been at least a year since the only mental health provider left in county. Services can be assessed, though, through the local, regional, local management entity in which Gates County falls, under which is now Trillium Health Resources. Substance abuse, there's been an increase in drug exposure to infants in both Suffolk, Virginia, and Gates County. Prescription drug use by adults and teenagers continues to be an area that requires complex case work due to substances often being obtained legally and abuse of them often masked by reasons determined by a medical professional. Currently, those substance abuse agencies have an office in Gates County. Domestic violence reports remain a significant portion of our caseload. Communication and collaboration between local agencies serving victims of domestic violence, DSS, law enforcement, public health, mental health, DB service providers, district attorney, et cetera, continue to improve with efforts to strengthen partnerships ongoing. Substandard housing remains to be an issue and is receiving additional tension from the community as it relates to lack of indoor plumbing, electric structures, and inadequate insufficient heating sources, of all which place children, the disabled, and elderly at risk. And I will also say, being the Secretary of the Gates County Housing Committee, there's great work going on here in the county, and I believe at our last meeting, indoor plumbing was brought up, and it seemed like we didn't know of any homes at the time. Nothing had been brought to our attention recently regarding that. The economy continues to impact Gates County residents, although Gates County's S S child welfare did not receive, did not find any evidence, but parents and caretakers had neglected the children, the lack of nutrition to the property. There was an increase in food and nutrition cases. In fiscal year 2014-15, 613 applications were taken by Gates County ESS, whereas in fiscal year 2012 through 2013, 492 applications were taken. I will also contribute that to the increase in population, and it also could be contributed to add on children or other families in those cases. Bullying and teen suicide. While the issue of bullying and teen suicide has not reached an evident level in Gates County, as opposed to other counties in North Carolina, this issue piqued the interest of the CCPT during 2014-15. September 19th, there was a suicide prevention symposium held at the Museum of the Evermore. Jail person was the Galiu at Lyam District Administrator. National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the month of April, the team members displayed pinwheels in front of the Gates County ESS buildings if you passed by, and you kind of got a little reflection of, said, what was that? That's our pinwheel garden, and we may have the same in 2016. Domestic violence awareness month in October, Evermore Hope Line posted again, the Purple for Peace Day, and by wearing purple, I would come here to send a powerful message that there's no place for a DB in our homes, neighborhoods, workplaces, or schools. Health insurance for children. Madam Chair, I remember when you presented that to me, and I did something about it. We put an article in the newspaper and also on the county website. If there were any families or anyone had knowledge of some children in our county that did not have insurance, they could definitely contact our department. Human trafficking is one of the fastest growing crimes in the United States. There's an estimated 20.9 million victims of human trafficking globally, including 5.5 million children. According to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, North Carolina is the eighth most likely state for trafficking to occur in the United States. Some may say, why? I guess we can look at Interstate 95, that route, which links, you know, coming from the south to the north. That's one thing that I agree about, County 95. Gates County CCPT was represented during a special town meeting at Bertie County High School, at least on the third, and of course, we had a representative of the team there. Whilst at last, some of us may be familiar with the Take Back Day, where you have the medication drop-off for the unused or expired medication, and I believe that took place here at the Sheriff's Office, and also here in the future, maybe at the pharmacy, as well as at the Sheriff's Office. And moving forward, your recommendations from the Board of County Commissioners, actions that will address child protection in the county, and what I have listed, including responses from the team members, is to continue to approve sufficient funding through the Department of Social Services to enable the provision of quality child protective services and supportive services for families, workforce, family assistance, Medicaid, and food stamps, et cetera. For a fully trained, dedicated law enforcement officer to assist DSS matters with expertise in child and elderly abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Provide additional safe recreational opportunities for you to hurt them from dangerous activities that they engage in for lack of other options. Engage, encourage, enhance, and continue collaboration between DSS, law enforcement, public health, mental health, the courts, and the community in assessment and treatment of domestic violence. Substance abuse and other identified issues that threaten family, self-sufficiency, and safety, and pregnancy for children. Support the CCPTC/CFPT's exploration of funding options for community awareness and education and provide local match if required. The recruitment and retention of a local mental health substance abuse provider within Gates County that would be able to provide services, and of course, involve, address identified gaps in services for county residents, including retention of private mental health services to ensure the local success of mental health reform and others as identified throughout the year. And C, on page nine, the team is open to other new appointments. Per the Board of Commissioners' recommendations, there are no term limits to appointments, therefore, if it is the Board's pleasure to look at current participants and make new appointments, we will accommodate those changes readily as well. We encourage the Commissioners to support and ensure that all team members attend these quarterly meetings. We understand that all departments have high workloads, however, we feel this team is vital as it relates to the safety of children in Gates County. And then, and the last one, CCPT members, CLPT members, who are also Gates County ESS staff, serve on the following: Gates County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council and the Gates County Child Community Collaborative.
Thank you for your report, and certainly some of the statistics are a little concerning.
Yes.
And certainly, mental health and drug are problems that we have constantly curbed, not also the children, but for adults as well. Any more?
Madam Chairman, I read over the report, the report today.
Yes.
But I will say, I'm glad that you went over it like you did, because it sounded a little differently.
Yes.
Given you say it for some reason. But I would like to commend Ms. Holly of her committee for a very good report.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Under the recommendations, under A, where it says, "Recommend to fund fully trained, dedicated law enforcement officers to assist DSS matters with expertise in child and elder abuse, neglect, exploitation." What does the law enforcement support look like right now? I know it's not like the school system where you have a resource officer there all the time, but it's just a phone call away. Are they having any special training now in regards to child abuse, or how protective services are carried out?
I can say that law enforcement has always been readily available, but they also have to prioritize, because in event our agency receives a report that could require an immediate or within a 24-hour response, they have to prioritize how many staff do they have that need to go elsewhere, but else come with us. However, with child protective services, we must respond in our timeframe. So, in some instances, that may require that the social workers may have to go alone, and law enforcement come later, or maybe not at all, or we have to get back with them later. But they do not have anyone designated that, okay, whenever DSS receives a call and they need to initiate, that yes, we can go. It doesn't always happen that way. But because we have law enforcement who also serves along the protection team, they are also privy to any of the training that we may attend. Maybe not by division, but like the symposium, we have representation. Kids First may be having a training, and of course, law enforcement is welcome to attend. So, they pretty much say a rest.
See, Chef Webb is on the, on the team, so he's in tune with the needs, I don't have...
Yes, sir. If you read that, designated one officer strictly for DSS. That's where I come to y'all with hats, I have someone signed, do nothing but work for DSS. As it is, we respond help in every case they have, but that's what it's asking for. That's what I mean, mission and officer designated. But I have all my staff, we're trained on all those things you mentioned, Mr. Jordan. Go through them on every day or every month. In fact, we have training this month, 10th and 11th, that our aid services normally do. But what that is asking for, and the state is asking for, is an officer designated to do nothing but work for DSS. And at this time right now, we're doing just enough to keep our head above the world.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Holly. Madam Chairman, I'd just like to mention, in addition to that, by sitting on the Trillium Board, Executive Board, and also sitting on the Human Rights Board for Behavioral Health, and subsequently, the Almond Health Board, we address those issues that you brought up and shown us. We do have a number of suicides, fortunately not in Gates County, but what we have recognized is that the average age of suicide has dropped from age 52 to 36. So, that is something that kind of concerns us. What concerned me about our reporting procedure and having opportunities to go through those reports, both suicides in the 20 other counties, is that sometimes they are not reported in any kind of detail. So, we don't know where the suicide happened, don't know if there's a note left. So, I have asked for all of that. I don't know if that's come down to the social services, but we would certainly like to know where it happened and who reported it, and some more details about the suicides.
And we see this mental health issue rise up in a lot of our investigations, the lack of mental health physicians. We don't have the time for some area to do evaluations, and it resonates right for various areas in our community. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Holly. Thank you for the work you do and your team.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Holly Littlepitt, to you. We thought you were a no-show.
And I had gone over this last night in the room, and yet the people information on the conversation.
We are free today to respond to the charge after our last presentation concerning a senior center. We were charged to look at facilities that would be possible locations for it centrally located in the county. The report that you have received, we were unable to get it to you when the package ran out, because we were waiting on a presentation from one of the facility owners, which came after, right, which was supposed to come, it came, would have come after your reports were due, and we had to reschedule the Gates County Agent Task Force meeting to happen after that meeting to approve the report before we brought it forward. But unfortunately, they declined and rescinded their offer, so I had to hand you the reports today. So, I'm going to go over the report. To start with, you also asked the community to participate in a survey, considering whether they wanted a senior center or not, and the response was 304 participants of the survey with 90% saying yes and 10% saying no. So, that was 272 for the 90%, and 31% no. There was a one that was a yes and a no. So, just rounding those percentages off, that's how it fell off. Some of the comments for the senior center was, it is clear that people don't understand what a senior center is. As many comments on the notice, we have a community center, we have a senior program there, and we do not have a senior program at the community center. We have a community meal site, which provides nutritious food. A senior center is a comprehensive program for seniors that deals with resources for them, and educational opportunities, and recreational opportunities. One of the other comments is that it could be the single community center, and one of the guidelines from the state is that be dedicated space, 4,000 square feet approximately, for seniors only, and the community center is not for seniors only. So, moving forward with that, in the report, we would say you're... So moving forward with that, in the report, we would say your next steps would be to determine your senior center location, determine your actual cost, operating cost, and pursue funding opportunities, which we have already started with our two legislative representatives that have pledged to try to find some state funding appropriate in Gates County, and to implement startup requiring of staff. So if you turn the page to the first page, I put in your report, the facility requirements that were in your comprehensive plan, just to bring them forward, to remind you of what that space requirement is. And then, if you turn to the next page, the back of that page, the facility spec recommendation from the comprehensive plan, we had made a first choice and a second choice recommendation in your comprehensive plan. Moving on to the top of the page, it says prioritize facility recommendations. I'm going to go through the facilities that we looked at as possibilities for a senior center. The first one was the Gates County Community Center, which is owned by the county, and the square footage there is not enough extra for a senior center. So you would have to add a facility beside it, and you could connect it like they have done in Curta. The pros are that you own the center, it's centrally located, it has the facilities that lends itself to the option of shims, some spaces such as the gym, kitchen, exercise room with membership, and outdoor recreation facilities. Currently, the community meal program is located there, and it could be attached to the present structure, blocking access door between the two facilities, similar to Curta, YMC, Parks Rec, and Senior Complex. It would be its own entity and operate as a county department with its own policies, procedures, and directly report to the county manager. The cons would be that you all have turned the management of the staff of the community center over to the school board and the building. So as a result, any program that anybody wants to do that's not school-related must be approved by the school board to have it in that facility, and you must have the designated liability insurance. So if the senior center was connected and wanted to use part of that facility, they would always have to refer to the school board to approve anything they wanted to do, and have them co-sponsor it to avoid having to get separate insurance, while there'll be a policy for each individual activity. The second thing would be, the center operates on the school calendar as it relates to holidays, et cetera, which does not always match up with county holidays. So there would be some concerns possibly with when the senior center would be open versus the community center being open. Also, that would be new commercial construction. In calling one of the local construction firms, I got a quote of about 150 to 250 square feet for commercial, new construction. And also, in order to construct beside the community center, you would have to purchase land from the neighbor. We contacted the neighbor, they never gave a response concerning if they were still willing to sell. At the last time we tried to get the senior center, they were making an offer at that time of $350,000 for the entire acreage and house. They did not want to sell a portion of it. Any questions on the community center option?
You're sure, you're sure the 350 included the house?
Yes.
No.
That was back when we first were doing the senior center in college, I was giving the presentation. Any other questions? Okay, moving to the Gates County Dental Clinic. If you'll make a note, when we did this presentation for the Gates County Agent Committee, there were a couple, few items that we found out. So if you just mark in your report that that building was built in 1978, question hang up as to the age of the building. It is 3,424 square feet without the gym space being incorporated in that. With the gym space is 4,416, which is what they want for a senior center. Also, Taylor Pharmacy Building is available if you wanted to have additional space to rent or purchase. The pros are, it's centrally located and owned by the county, it has a lobby reception area, and each and all additional rooms, and approximately six bathrooms, which lends itself to the professional environment for the senior center. However, there are no kitchen facilities for the community meal program, and in addition, the gyms program is located in the same facility, which is approximately three to four rooms, which could be an added resource, and the health department is located next door on the same campus. The gyms program is based, would need to be a part of the senior program in order to have it counted in the required square footage. If the gyms program falls under the senior center, it would enable it to be accessible on a full-time basis and ensure the safety of the gym staff, since they are generally only one person working at a time when they are open. The dental section would need to be renovated to address the requirements for the senior center, and Taylor Pharmacy Building is on that same complex and could be used for additional space. Your cons are, currently, one of the storage rooms in the gym section is not usable due to drainage and dampness, which has caused moth, moth growth, which could lead to a black mold issue, and the overhang to the storage back door needs repair, and it's currently unsafe, so they've been instructed not to use that area. Also, there are some septic system issues. That entire complex is tied into one septic system. The county has, has not appropriated funds right now to address any of these issues. However, you are working on a septic system, so it was stated at the meeting that that possibly could be tied into what you are already planning on doing. If the senior center was co-located with gyms, this would impact the professional operation of the senior center, along with limiting total use of the building due to some dampness and safety issues. Also, right now, gyms is having to do have all food delivered into the lobby, which wouldn't be that professional for that, so that area could be switched with delivery could be provided through that entrance. That is, and then, under 2A, the Taylor Pharmacy Building, if you were to consider that as a part of that complex, they currently want $189,000 lease-up purchase option, and that was the latest. And in the back of your package, you'll have any information we got from the facility owners is attached, so you'll see the Taylor Pharmacy Realty paper that shows the total information on that facility. And the Taylor Pharmacy Building is 2,039 square feet. Of course, the pros, located on the same complex, additional space, and land, plenty of parking is available out there. The cons are, you would have to purchase the building, and of course, there would be still some septic issues, since it's all tied into the same septic system. Any comments or questions on the dental complex?
Just, just on Taylor Pharmacy, could you share who's current owners are?
Carl Taylor is the current owner. And I, I did speak to him personally, in addition to the realtor.
Is it currently up for sale?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
I have a question on the dental clinic, and it really relates to gyms. What, how many hours currently is gyms in operation?
Mrs. Beechley, can we get three days? Would it might Wednesday or Friday?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, two hours each day.
And specifically, those hours are?
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve.
Any questions on the dental?
The Lewis Oil Factory, Miss Lou Lou Yure has made an offer for purchase of her building at $73,920. The square footage is from 7,500 to 8,000 acres. The pros are, it's centrally located, historic building that was formerly the Ice House, and it has more than enough space for a senior center, it has twice the amount of space. The cons are, renovation is required, no kitchen facility for the community meal program. The owner estimates a renovation cost to be approximately 150 to 175,000 for repairs on electrical floor and carpeting, and she suggested a sunroom was screened in for it. The price is not included, non-commercial or commercial kitchen, and renovation will be needed on the outside alone, landscaping and parking are created, and parking is limited. And the septic system currently accommodates approximately 75, because that was the number of employees that they had maximum at any given time. And Ms. Yure did provide a letter stating what she saw could be done with the building, and also a map that shows the layout of the building. We did not have a map for the dental clinic, because it's been renovated several times since the mapping map was filed.
Did you say we have a map?
Right.
How about parking? How about parking?
It's limited, limited after work, which is basically, they got front a little bit on the side.
Have you provided us at any point with a estimate, how many parking spaces, regardless of where they are, that, that facility, based on the square footage of 4,000, what would be needed?
No, because it all depends on what's happening in the immediate county program.
Well, I mean, but, but like assisted living facility, it was based on the number of beds.
Right, we didn't have that.
Yeah, that might, that might help us in you. I don't want to eliminate any of these things, but that event alone may eliminate the facility.
Right.
There's something to consider.
Okay, and next, number, number four, Family Foods in Gatesville made an offer. They were selling Gatesville Family Foods building and space for $300,000. The square footage is 6,400. It is centrally located, the owners have offered a lease and purchase of the land and building, parking on both sides of the building and on the street. You have a handout question that they broke down, what your payments would be, having you wanted to purchase over several years, depending on what you chose, if you went with them, so I include that in your package. The cons are, interior renovation would be needed, no kitchen facilities for community meal program. The facility has septic tank issues. If an alternative system were needed, you may need to purchase additional land for location of that system. The lot immediately behind Family Foods building is owned by the same entity, but is not included in the offer price, and you would need to negotiate price, purchase price of additional, like it would have moved toward an alternative septic system, because the space there is just the parking, the building, the parking, and a little bit in the back. Any comments on Family Foods in Gatesville?
I think I did say storage issues.
Mm-hmm.
Can you find those, hopefully?
I'm just knowing, you're going to need a new septic warehouse. Okay, moving to number five, Marcia's House of Flowers. She made an offer for her facility of 280,000. The square footage is 3,036 without storage building, 3,334 with storage building, 1,176 square feet unheated, and 1860 feet heated. The pros are, the structure is located in Gates, it's a little off-center, but it's not essentially located as the other. Owner has renovated the building for the florist business, and if you look under the cons, if you take that last sentence and move it up to pros, it got missed and going under pros, they have made improvement for heating, air system, and handicap access on the back room. Parking is located on the street in addition to a facility on sides and back of the building. The cons are, the facility space requirement was not met for a senior center. You would need an additional 564 square feet in to be in compliance for a multipurpose senior center, and currently, the facility is under support of development program status, which means you would not become certified and will not be able to possibly access some of the state funds that might be available. And you would need renovation of interior and some exterior updated. Any questions on Marcia's House of Flowers?
Her quote says 285,000. Information that she provided.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that is the correct?
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Okay, and if the bottom, you see the Smith Buckland Historical Site that Mr. Smith made a presentation, you all to be considered, they have withdrawn their offer. Okay, the last page that you see is kind of a bridge sheet that puts all of those recommendations. We have them in order of our ranking, and kind of gives you a quick glance of the report as an easy cheat sheet on all of the segments.
Well, thank you for your information. You certainly gave us a lot to read and consider, and really consider, I mean, anything to do that. So it's one time to review this. I might just have one question. When you said about the surveys, I know they were online, and what else? I mean, some of them were online, some of them were paper. And were hypothetically distributed as paper ones?
Paper ones at various meetings, anywhere where people were, the credit union had a box or something there. The Gates Agent Task Force were given copies to go out in the community and get those completed. They were at the community center. So anywhere that people were that knew about the survey that said they were distributed, distributed, and then either turned it in to Melissa, myself, or at DSS. The majority that came in were hard copies. Thank you. And we'll, we'll, we'll try to find out what the parking requirement is, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. And can I ask you, Gates County Housing?
I mean, Gates County Senior Center, subcommittee to stand that helped with putting this information together for you. We have Ashley Lamb is out here today from the area agent, and if the agent task is to stand that, I'll print the report and come forward.
Well, thank all of your work. We can see you put in a lot of, give us a lot of information, and we will start with taking one of those. Okay, we will now head to administrative reports, and then, I believe, the first one's county managers.
This is for January 16th through February 12th. Historic courthouse for court was received from WJDE, and it is included in your agenda later during this meeting. Also, for you, another message or consideration also, I believe it was yesterday. On January 20th, Sheriff Webb and I met with Attorney Henry Gor, representing the North County Association of County Commissioners Risk Assessment Section, to learn more about the moonlighting policy now available through risk management. The policy is designed to protect the county and the sheriff's office from accidents that may occur when deputies are working off duty hours for a private company, and the policy can be adapted. And the policy can be adapted to fit the needs of the county. On January the twenty-seventh, the Alamoar Regional Planning Committees met at College of the Alamoar. Pasquale Tank and for Quinman County CTP were approved, as was methodology for determined projects for future funding. Ed Goddard Goodwin, who is in charge of the ferry division, provided comments and updated the board on the passenger ferry study completion date. The committee is reviewing the passenger ferry study and will meet again on February the tenth, two thousand sixteen. It's anticipated the study will be released with public's review after that date. After polling member of county and municipality RTAC member regarding whether they had adopted a resolution to delay a vote on ferry towing, which Gates County had approved. A motion was made and seconded to delay further discussion regarding the polling until after the two thousand sixteen General Assembly Short Session. All voted in favor. The Alamoar Regional Planning Organization supports the following key regional transportation initiatives. Ensure funding for future interstate along US sixty-four and seventeen from Raleigh to Hampton Roads area in Virginia. It will continue to seek additional permanent sources of funding for new and replacement ferry vessels and support vessels. Seek methods to increase the current level of North Carolina Department of Transportation Division One maintenance funds. Ensure funding for widening of highways and needed bridge replacements along hurricane evacuation routes. And seek the rotation of key RPO and DOT division staff throughout the state of the SPOT Work Group. And that's who determines the funding for this new transportation plan to ensure that all RPOs and the Department of Transportation divisions are represented equally. January twenty-eighth, Sheriff Hoffler and I met with managers and chairs from Camden, Chawan, Peretzet, Pasquale Tank and for Quinman. Curtech expressed concerns about how solar farms are taxed and has passed a resolution requesting a lifting of the solar tax credits on property. Other counties were encouraged to follow suit. This is also on the agenda of the new business for further discussion. Pasquale Tank has requested all counties pay a portion of the DA's office expenses. Discussion ensued about why counties do not pay, and this will be discussed again at the next meeting. I attended the North Carolina City and County Managers Association meeting in Durham, February third to the fifth. The association has updated its strategic plan. During the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Update, counties expressed concern about backup nine-one-one centers and the cost of E-Ways. The legislature has asked for studying of E-Ways with the report due in March. North Carolina Association County Commissioner's staff anticipate school construction and revenue changes to be discussed during the short session. County and city managers from the Alamoar Commission area met to learn more about Alamoar RC and D on February the eleventh. They also discussed topics of concern that are common to all and what is taking place in each county or municipality. And on February the twelfth, I met with economic developers from Vertie, Halifax, Hurford, and North Hampton, as well as Tim Ivy, Rex Raker, Paul Zimmerman, Dan Parks, and Marshall Cherry to discuss a marketing initiative for all of the counties. Do you have any questions?
Um, Pasquale R N has filled out how much they wanted us to pay based on the square footage of the DA's office and cost of services, but, um...
Nice, and...
It really was. It was a very nice sale.
Yeah, I can remember what the number was.
Six, something.
Six something, I did not bring that with me. It's in my budget information in my office.
I'd say not everybody was jumping on board.
Good place, boy.
Okay, any questions for the county manager? Um, one question you said about school construction. Uh, what do they, are they...
That is, that's the statement they made. They expect it to be discussed. They could not give any insight, but evidently that is a topic that lots of counties are interested in.
Well, hopefully they will do something. Okay, moving on, finance. Oh, Ms. Tippman is not here. Um, tax. Ms. Lane. Morning.
And a good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We've got two versions of the collector's report. The first you received Monday did not have the BTS. Um, we finally got the experience yesterday and you got it revised, you know, collector's report. Um, are there any questions? Some of that, as you can see, we're, we're tracking, you know, pretty well with, um, some of these delinquent. We did, uh, get a good response and continue to get a good response before we start advertising, um, you know, for those delinquent accounts. But are there any questions on the tax collector's report?
I did notice that, um, the items that were added said funds collected through DMB county and funds collected, uh, from DMB town. Those were two entries that was added on the revised sheet. And, um, I didn't see a difference in the percentage of prior year collections to current year collections on their, uh, motor vehicle activity.
And, and you won't, no, sir. That's, that's an unrelated entity, if you will. Um, those figures that were reported, um, through the county and the town, they are specifically what is collected, um, by DMB and appropriated to the county. So you, you won't see any change. So, you know, uh, that's kind of an unrelated entity, uh, you know, with DMT, uh, DMB collecting those figures now for, so.
Okay, all right. Personal history.
That's right, yes, sir. Uh, the, the old, uh, the figures at the very top are related to those DMB bills that, you know, county used to bill for, you know, as of two years ago, that and the long risk case. Which is a good thing because there is, uh, nobody writes a magic typically to DMB and the collection rate is generally pretty high. So that's, that's good for that.
And the DMB thinks I thought all four of them were not safe to collect.
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions for Mrs. Lane before we get to her, um, the refunds?
That is correct. You have two refunds there, um, one for personal property of camper refund number one in the amount of a hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-four cent. The camper was actually sold, so you have some documentation there to give your reference.
I have a question, number two.
Should we do these one at a time?
Uh, it's preference of the board if you want to.
If you wanted to get it, I don't know. Okay, you know, I have a motion to, um, for the, number one, the refund, one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-four cent to, uh, to the couple for the sale of their, um, camper to return the tax that they had paid.
I move.
Second.
Okay, motion to be made, second, in discussion. There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Number one is approved. Number two?
Uh, refund number two, uh, had a mortgage company, uh, offer payment. And the account was already paid in full previously. Um, the refund referenced is the, in the amount of one thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-one cent. You had a question on that?
Who, who paid it first?
Um, we do not, I don't have that in the paperwork submitted. We can, well, CoreLogic looks like they submitted initially the payment. And then Stone Gate Mortgage also. So CoreLogic is a different entity service, much like Loretta Service, if you will. So it looks like CoreLogic submitted payment initially. And then, um, December seventh, we got that first payment. And then, uh, after that, the Stone Gate Mortgage also paid again.
So when they, um, when they both paid, was a physical check that came in?
Um, usually CoreLogic, uh, they submit payment en masse. We might have, we have several, uh, it might be thirty or forty listed in a cumulative type with all the account numbers referenced. Uh, for example, it might be one from CoreLogic that has up to twenty or thirty accounts or more. Uh, I would say CoreLogic is one of our bigger tax services in the county, much like Loretta, um, state employees, I think.
Those, those questions were leading up to this question.
Okay.
Um, are we required, when we receive that payment, the second one? Are we required to deposit it and refund it? Or can we just put it in an envelope and say it's already been paid? Is there a protocol?
Um, we, we actually, we have done both. Deputy Teckelite might echo some comments on this.
It depends if...
Stand up, please.
If, if the check you receive is for that particular parcel, then you can, and it's paid, you can return the check.
Okay.
But if the check has multiple parcels that they're paying, then you have to refund.
Like CoreLogic?
Right, right.
Okay.
All right.
It's...
Just a two-day difference, is that what I see? Or when I view that?
In terms of one of them?
Of the payments?
Uh, yes, on the seventh and then very shortly after, uh, nine-one-one.
Might have changed more if you refinanced with somebody?
Yeah, that's right.
Much like...
Yeah, a line of credit of some sort, which is, um, uh, is likely, you know, you know, with, uh, people refinancing or whatnot.
Any additional questions? Do I have a motion to refund the loan care of one thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-one cent?
Make that motion?
Second.
Motion made, second, in discussion. There are none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Anything else?
Um, well, yes, ma'am. Uh, it is that time of year where we'll be advertising in the paper. I will be getting motion from the board in years past. We typically advertise all prior years. It's the board's preference to, um, use that same format this year as we get to the, uh, into March. Um, those people who've got those loads will have an opportunity to pay. And then after that, we will start that process. And I'd like to ask the board for a motion, whatever their preference for advertising.
And we have been advertising the tax ten years, right?
Uh, that is correct, all, all delinquent years, um, and that was...
Oh, well, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct, yes.
We have to know that on the top of here, the Jones Tax Act allows us to vote.
Well, well, actually, uh, some counties just advertise the, the current year only. So I think it's a board decision as well, but I don't make a specific statute in mind. But, you know, a lot of, of the boards, you know, vote whether to advertise.
And I believe we got a paper the whole day that we really technically can go back beyond ten years. Isn't that what the paper said for collection time? Traditionally, it's only been ten years. But it has, the, the statutes, and I forgot what, which one it was, said we could go back.
Um, I wonder, do we have any feeling for, I mean, we had collected a lot of those when we went back ten years. And as we see the report that's dwindling down, I wonder what the cost difference would be in doing current year versus a ten-year or the oldest year unpaid?
Um, probably pretty substantial because that, in the Gates Index, it appears as an insert. So for advertising purposes, you know, maybe something, um, thirteen hundred versus six hundred in terms of that. This would be a lot, um, I'd have to get a quote, of course. But the, the way it typically appears, it's so large of, and we, uh, utilize the technique of putting an insert in the Gates County Index. That would certainly be less substantial, you know, Commissioner Owens, if we just advertise the current year. But it, it serves a purpose of, uh, reminding folks that, you know, what is due, um, you know, trying to elicit some response, so.
And you said you have had, um, pretty decent response to...
Uh, I believe so. We even targeted some of the old personal property DMB bills as we speak of that people say, I crashed that car, I sold it for salvage. That does not persep that, you know, the bill, you know, was unpaid. So we, we've had some good, good response from that. Um, you know, and, and the advertising aspect, we do provide that window of time to keep it out of the paper. Some people don't, it doesn't bother them, but others are, are, are pretty, you know, resolutely thinking when they're naming the papers, so.
Yeah, we have on our report, we have, um, bills at the less than two dollars, less than a dollar, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Are those entries, do they appear when we do the, the ten-year thing? Do they show up there anywhere at all?
Uh, they do not. If they're under a certain amount, it's, you know, less cost effective for us to, to target those, if you will. Um, so they are, they are perished. And, and in the final review of the delinquent file, that, um, you will have a chance to, to make sure none of those are, are in there. So we're not paying for advertising because it all, all is a part of the charge, of course. But, um, to eliminate those if we can, um, yeah.
Okay, um, thank you for that explanation. Um, for the last few years, we've had done ten years. I did, I have a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that, uh, we authorize the tax administrator to, um, advertise the delinquent taxes in accordance with appropriate general statute, um, in our local legislature.
Okay, I have a motion to be made to advertise for the delinquent taxes.
Second.
Okay, in discussion.
I'd like to ask our county manager to, uh, find that statute and add that to the minutes if we may. When we find that, that statute, just so we have, like, saying why we did that for history.
And also, is this for all ten years?
Yeah, any prior years, yes.
Oh, well, it, it doesn't, I mean, if you have two years, it's two years.
This way, I guess.
The max, you can go back as soon, but you would refrain. Okay, motion before us is advertise for delinquent taxes in our local newspaper, including tax taxes for, if any, for a ten-year period.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. There aren't hearing none?
Okay, we appreciate that, thank you.
One other question, um, this may be a close session issue, but do you have any update on the Jones tax issue?
We weren't, I'm sorry.
Do you have any, uh, new information that you can share with us, probably, on the Jones tax issue?
Um, not at this time, probably for, for public comment, no, no, sir. Other than some, uh, additional charges were added to that from the law firm. Um, some fees, if you will, were recently added to that account.
Was our attorney involved in looking over that?
Uh, I believe so. He has been, I think, in some conversations on the, um, personal note there. Um, and we have advised Zacchaeus of the, uh, unique nature of it. But, um, we, we have recently added some additional charges, uh, for that account.
Well, will, will anything that you see right now change as a result of the status, of the new status, uh, being applied?
I, I'm, I'm not sure, perhaps, uh, yeah, like I said, it is a very unique case and, um, it could, like I said, um, you know, county attorney is involved on kind of a personal note. So that's, it's, it's good for us to have that interaction as well as, you know, Zacchaeus. Um, but, but recently, like I said, we, I think it was, uh, under six dollars or so that we added for attorney charges, just, just, uh, as we go along, which we do, uh, in any case, on any account, so.
I'd ask county manager, is this something they could wait until I mention any, uh, to have a close session with you?
I think that's something you need to defer to tactics, because it involves tax and I'm not sure the status of...
What, Mr. Godwin has, uh, been able to get some feedback as well. I, I'm not spoken with him on how in-depth he's been able to, to touch on that.
I think it would be good if you would just bring us up to me. Uh, we've heard informally of this change of status. And, you know, it would be good, if all of us are aware of what the status is and what, uh, indication it might have in going forward. What kind of liability is it, being close to county?
Okay, absolutely.
So I'll ask you, if you don't mind, if you want to close session, that you just give us an update on that.
And what can we do in both session?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, now we go to personnel and department reports. Um, I believe, um, Deputy Parker is retiring. Um, was Monday his last day?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, tell him that certainly we hope him well and continue to work on his health. Certainly he served very many years. And, uh, any department reports that you have questions about that were in your packet? Okay, so.
Couple, couple questions.
Okay.
Uh, for maintenance department, uh, just, I'm just a little curious, is that new truck twenty sixteen or twenty fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
And what color is it, of course? Why?
Uh, also, under maintenance, uh, building ground, is that installed resin? Is it R E S I N, uh, resin in the, uh, system?
Oh, that was at the, um, Department of Social Service. They are already installed. Verizon.
Verizon, okay. All right, I was curious what that was, but. Thank you.
Thank you for the work you did. Okay, um, articles of interest, I don't believe there are any. A couple of dates that we might need to, um, to talk about, we have coming up for next Tuesday. I believe it is election day, primary day in North Carolina, because I didn't vote. Uh, we also have a meeting coming up on March eight for the, uh, Gates County Board House by the North Carolina Volunteer, Volunteer Agricultural District Program ahead of Plymouth, and Chalons have that already. And we have a district-wide commissioners meeting on April the sixth.
It's the same day as our commissioners meeting.
That's right, it's on Wednesday.
And I believe we received this information after your packets had gone out. But Bobby Harris, who is president of the Abimall Housman Association, has invited commissioners to the annual dinner of the Abimall Housman Association. It will be held at the Abimall forage livestock building off Highway seventeen south at one P M on March the twelfth. And there's a phone number for people to RSVP. I will scan this for you to have information, if you could let me know something about Bobby, please.
Okay, I think that comes over here. Okay, um, do you, I think it's, do we need a stretch break?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute stretch break, and we'll go into public hearing of the, the Gates County Medical Transport Service Permitting Ordinance. Okay, we might enter to room number six, a public hearing amendment to the Gates County Medical Transport Service Permitting Ordinance, okay, ma'am. I have a motion to go into public hearing.
So move.
Motion's been made in seconds and entering to a public hearing. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're going into public hearing.
Billy went into some training this week, so I will give you an update on the Medical Transportation Service Permitting Ordinance. There has been discussion about updating it, and so the committee met, I believe it was about two and a half weeks ago, to review suggested changes in language to clarify and also to reduce, in some cases, the amount of definitions. You have before you the strike-through version. Everything that has a strike through, of course, is to be deleted. Everything that is in italics and underlined has either been added to a definition or is a new definition or explanation.
Okay, it says, in one, the, the public have a comment on the changes in, uh, Gates County Medical Transport Service Permitting Ordinance. Why no one's rushing to the front?
Chairman?
Yep.
I'm making a motion if we come out of closed session?
Motion's been made, come out of the board.
Excuse me, pu- public hearing.
Public hearing. Um, do I have a second?
Second, I motion, no trouble.
Okay, motion's been made, second, come out of the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now we are open, I mean, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Um, I was going to suggest that we go ahead and get Stormy up to the table, in case we, in case we have something. I, I think I've got a few things, just clarification. I know we, Stormy, I know we want to get this right. Andy, do you want to go first?
Well, uh, I, I would, maybe, um, my question might ask you, or you would my answer?
All right, I'll go ahead. Um, have you got the?
I don't have the strike-through version. I have the draft and the final. My email program decided to die this morning.
Can I? So I couldn't bring it by, I'm afraid.
That was it, we kind of.
The strike-through does not reflect the modifications that we have permitted after we had the committee meeting. This clean, this clean copy under permit E, if you look on the strike-through page, page one, does everybody have a clean copy?
Yes, there's a clean copy.
I did. Okay, okay. All right, um, under permit E, under the clean copy, uh, you have a, after it says, "Only permitted shall be allowed by medical transport pickup from Gates County." And we discussed this during our, uh, committee meeting, unless exempted by section one dash one oh five, it's one dash five. And what that basically allows, if we turn back to that section, uh, one oh eight, it, uh, specifies that, uh, no permit will be required, uh, number one, any entity inheriting assistance to a permitted ambulance service in case of major catastrophes, mutual aid, or emergency equipment services permitted by Gates County, uh, in which are insufficient or unable to cope, and the services are requested through official means by Gates County Emergency Management. It leaves the option for the county to bring in additional help, just in cases where over blooded or we have some major issues. That was one of the, I, it was not in the original strike-through, but that was something that was added, uh, under the clean copy as a result of the, um, of our discussion. I think we need to have a couple of those. I think everything else was a type of draft one. Clean copy will really reflect basically what's in the strike-through.
Okay, I had, um, and, and mine is just, I want to make sure that we're closing loopholes and all that stuff, which is the intent of what we're doing here. On page five, and I, I only worked with the strike-through copy. Page five, E at the very bottom. That first, uh, first sentence, let me read it, I want to read it as it, as it sits. First law, "Any medical transport entity that provides service in Gates County, whether permitted or not, shall produce for inspection, current transport logs, personnel credentials, and proof of insurance." I think we should, um, I think we should add this, "Upon request by Gates County Emergency Management Director." I think that upon request is important there, and that it gives authority, because the enforcement person is the, uh, Gates County Emergency Management Director. He, I think that's what, am I right, or is Stormy, he is the reporter? I think it's upon request by the director, that would be the point, and that's all I have on page five.
At the end of the first sentence?
Yeah, I believe so.
How about in front of the semicolon?
Um, from the sentence.
You have the inspection come upon request, semicolon, here. Produce for inspection upon request. Or would you rather?
I, I think we had, upon the request, if you had it at the end, in the sense, then it would be a request of all of those lines. So I would put it at the end, so that it would be deemed that it produces, you have to know is that they produce three of the four things that's asked, that's not good enough. We're requesting for it to be complete. Is that really okay?
Yeah, well, if, if, the way it's, somehow the English teacher, but.
Go ahead, go ahead. Where, you have to put it after the semicolon?
If you, if you read, it said, "Any medical transport entity that provides services to Gates County, whether permitted or not, shall produce for inspection come upon request, current transport logs, personnel credentials, and proof of insurance."
That, that, that would be okay.
Okay, you're not going to include, who's more natural request?
Upon request by, yeah, I, I would have the whole thing in there.
By the director of EMS?
Yeah, after the, after the semicolon, I think.
Okay, E, by?
By Emergency Management Director.
Gates County Emergency Management Director.
Yeah, that's right.
No, not EMS. This is Emergency Management, because this is what Billy's in charge of.
Yeah, and I, and I actually looked back when I wrote that. I looked back to see how he was designated, and he was designated as Gates County Emergency Management Director. So I, I did that to keep it the same.
And just tweaking that, Jack, would you also want to talk about Emergency Management Director or designated, just in case?
I would give some options in case he's not available, if anyone can take it.
Because is that Stormy, does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Or do they?
And then on page eight, under, um.
Is this a strike-through?
Yeah, I stayed with the strike-through all the way. On page eight, under appeals or permit rejection. And I think this is a, this is, this is just a wording, and it's going to be in the first sentence. And I've got, it needs to be one of two ways. It says, "Any applicant or permit." And it says, "Who is?" If it stays permit, it should say, "Any applicant or permit that is rejected." Or if you wanted to change it to permitting, you could say, "Who?" "Any applicant or permitted, who is rejected." But if you're going to keep the permit there, it needs to be that is, except who is.
I think that what it means to say is, "Any applicant seeking permit, seeking a permit," basically what they're trying to do.
The word seeking, the word seeking was in there, I might, I might say something different, seeing it's not in there. I would say, look at that and see if that is.
Now, what was your suggestion?
Well, it, it's, it's based on the word permit.
I, I, I think if we just switch it around, and say, "Any permit advocate." Any permit advocate who is seeking, who is rejected. In other words, you're a permit advocate before you're permitted, you're permitting.
So if we switch the advocate and permit?
Right, just cross out "for" and put?
Any permit advocate who is rejected.
And who, and who would be right.
Right. I looked this over, Stormy, real busy, probably, I know, we want to close, maybe everything is right, I think that is. Okay, man, just one other thing, this is a bit big. You, you took it out, you took it out, except I didn't have it. But the call I wrote it down, I've, I've encouraged several times, uh, anytime I hear the word grandfather in one of these meetings, I always remind that person, you know, I never use that word, because when you say the word grandfather, people all back with things.
It's exceptions.
They're, they're exceptions, and I'm glad that we took it out, and I wrote here, "Never use grandfather, use per revision or per revision date."
Right.
So I'm glad you took it out.
The, the original origins of American for a company that no longer exists.
Right. I'm good.
Okay, any, uh, comments, questions?
I'm a good job in tweaking this, so I obviously spent a lot of time doing that.
Yes, um, thank you for your efforts to, um, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the revised version of the EMS Gates County Medical Transport Permitting Ordinance.
Motion's been made in second. Any more discussion?
Are we going to be, Stormy, do you think you got that down enough to change it, or do you want that, or do you get something to do?
I've got, I've got Billy's copy as well, and Billy, like I said, Billy's responsible for my, and once it's corrected, Billy, um, Billy will send it back to Melissa, and then it will be put on the website.
Okay, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we will have that, and on the website, which is, we mentioned. Okay, um, now we're going to room number seven, old business, and we have EMS discussion.
It's in your packet, there's information from Karen Malonzi regarding funding of a request and the options that the county has to fund EMS. County is responsible for making sure that those services are provided in the county. They have options to have them in-house or to contract with an outside provider. There's three options that are available for the county to fund EMS. The first is you can appropriate an increase in general fund monies, and you are free, it says, to contract with EMS providers and provide sufficient funding for the county's desired level of EMS services. And that generally means that you would have to put out a referendum for the citizens to vote on to increase taxes for fu- for the tax to only be used for EMS funding. The second option is the county would ask legislature to amend a local act to allow it to increase its fire fee authority to also fund EMS services. And the third is you could establish one or more special taxing districts and impose a higher tax rate in each district with additional proceeds specifically designated for the EMS funds in the district. And that references General Statute one fifty-three A, Article sixteen. And if that was an option, I know that there had been some discussion, and the recommendation would be that there just be one EMS district so that that, the EMS could cover the entire county, and everyone would be taxed at the same amount.
Okay, number one, requires a referendum.
Yes.
Number two, the amendment to collect the tax fees requires general similar action. And number three, you have to create a special district.
Right, and you would still have to have a public hearing in order to do, to create a special district.
Or four?
Do nothing.
Or five? Five, I mean, we could, um, we could say, this is three hundred fifty thousand dollars, right? We could say, we've got to come up with three hundred fifty thousand dollars. It wouldn't have to be any designated, um, fund or anything. It could just be part of the budget.
Correct.
Yeah, so I could, which would, if that amount would, you know, tax increase or something. But if we didn't want the, if we didn't want to have to go through the legislature, uh, if we didn't want to have to go through the referendum, we would just address it as, okay, this is going to be a new line item on the budget.
Or an increased line item, because probably there's twenty-five thousand.
This is going to be increased line item, that, okay.
Yes, uh, my concern with that was that, uh, if this was a recurring expense, well, that would be based on what we have in general fund. Still guarantee as to what the general fund is going to look like year to year. And we don't normally, uh, fund line items on a continuous process. And we don't normally fund line items on a continuous process based on general funds. You know, it's a one-time thing, which I think is not recurring, that's something different. But where potentially year for year, then you need to have some kind of revenue source that's going to be continuous.
Anyone else want to comment?
I have a question of Tom, Storley. Could you speak to what Henry just said, is this $353,000? Is that anticipated to be yearly, a month required? Or is it a one-time?
Anticipated to be yearly going forward as that was the proposal was. That's what the board sees as needed next year to start to bring our fleet up and then in continuing years be able to go onto a program to keep the fleet where it needs to be, to keep the equipment where it needs to be. The actual original proposal that was made to you all is using option three in the email that the county manager just read. It's following option three establishing a district and then assigning a fee was our idea that was pitched in the original proposal, is assign a fee to that district. We used, similar to the trash service that was attached to the water bills a few years ago, we used that as our concept. That generates $630,000 of money that can be set aside for future growth of EMS needs or emergency service needs in general.
County manager, how would that be the ultimate?
Three is you have to have a special taxing district. You have to have a public hearing in order to do that. And then there is a fee implemented and it could be billed monthly or yearly.
And we'd need to put that on a referendum?
No, you have to have a public hearing in order to establish a taxing district.
Would there be any, if we use option three, would there have to be any approval by the state?
Not the way I understood it, not the way Karen Malonzi.
The way the school government responded was, you hold us, public hearing to set the district. Once the district is set, then you as a board can decide how you're going to feed that.
Storley, when y'all were in your discussion, do you recall if you, you know, do you know what your dollar need is? Did you come from the back door at any point and look at it and say, well, it'll be, need to be $15 if it's per land parcel? Or it'll need to be $13 per, if it's per household? Did any of that come into play or anything?
That I recall in the discussion of that, when we came up with, when we went, followed that statute idea and came up with the $15 figure, similar to the trash dump, we realized that that would fund the program well into the future. And that's what we spoke about that night that we originally made the presentation is that we wouldn't be just funding this request. There would be funds available in the pool going forward in the future for things that aren't included in that presentation. We're in a 13-year-old building. An ambulance blows up tomorrow and I have to replace it. There would be some kind of emergency structure above and beyond the funding request.
Would you favor to say that if everybody who has a trash charge on their bill currently also had a $15 ambulance bill, call it whatever, that it would produce enough dollars to do that?
Information we were given was there's 3,500 water bills that generate $630,000 a year. If you did the $15.
If I may ask an earlier question pertaining to that. If I'm Joe Landau, I have my house and I'm going to have a trash deal at my house. I have nine rental properties. On the tax bill for those nine rental properties, is there a trash pickup deal? Which one is funded?
Trash is not, not by tax deals.
There'd be a fire fee on each one.
Right, there'd be a fire fee. Well, if it meets the definition, that's.
The structure on it.
Right.
Okay, so give me an example, if you will, of Joe Landau, where he could be charged more than once if we went with version three?
He was paying his own, if he was paying the water bills for his rental property and not the renter, that would be.
That would be one example. Might be the only thing.
As long as he requires the renter to pay the water bill, the fee would be. Our recommendation would be.
Who's named the water bill?
Right, it's attached to that, feed that water bill.
Am I missing anything there with that? Is it the only scenario you think of?
Currently, currently it's been, what, $15 per month for the convenience site?
Yes.
And what are we proposing for EMS? That's not $15.
We haven't, we haven't got to that point. Our, our proposal was if you, if you made it $15, you funded this program into the future.
But if we funded much higher than you asked for, for the year?
Right, for this year, that's, that was what our position was, that it would fund it into the future if at the time those requests come for a higher amount of money.
And that would be developed into its own line item?
It would have to be, yes.
Now, the fire fee is done by tax, like parcel, if it has a structure on it. How many parcels are included in that, Ms. Lane?
About over, about 3,700, based on the type and the amount. And the symbolizer also in that as well, so.
Did I hear the number 3,500? It was given to you by?
3,500 water bills is what we were given when we were going to research for the presentation.
The problem with water bill is not everybody has a water bill. And you know, that is, the person who just has the deep well does the water bill. They might be the one calling you, I mean.
Absolutely.
So it's kind of unfair to the ones who are having water, getting taxed and the ones who don't have kind of water get off scot-free. They might be using it a lot more than the followers. So I mean, we have to, fair, I think we have to come up with a system where you're going to catch all citizens or, you know, if you want that.
Well, basically, it has to do with that, tax, taxpayer.
But the same would be for taxes, we put it on the tax bill. Those who are renting, you take someone who has several properties, and I know this personally, I pay three, it might be four, five feet. Because you have several homes. And those would be insured by, they don't, they're not being anything. It's going to work both ways. Someone's going to benefit out of what the owner is paying or either way you get.
But now, you collect personal taxes, that's a right.
Well, yes, ma'am, for a personal property?
Uh huh.
Yes, that is a separate bill entirely as opposed to the real estate parcel as we have. You know, someone may own a single lot different from the landowner of the bill. That, that is a scenario in the county that is hopeful and a personal property.
Let me clarify. Let me rephrase your question. If somebody's living in, let's say Gates, kind of trying to get out of corporate mystery. If somebody's living in Gates and they're renting a house, they're not paying any property taxes, only on their car.
Oh, that's right, and that's paid via E M V, that is correct, yes.
So that's the only, the only taxes they're paying, Gates County benefit someone, would be auto payment.
And what's the? A bike or a camper or something like that? But that's all E M V.
I was trying to think of, I saw on paper not too long ago, where Suffolk, what they have a fee, annual fee that everyone pays, trying to figure out how that goes. Anyone saw that? Something like $60 a year?
Suffolk has a subscription program, it's called an EMS subscription program. It's not a required.
Right.
It's a voluntary program that, that we've looked at in the past where people can enter the program and what happens is we won't bill a member any additional money beyond what their insurance will pay. So say you're a Medicare recipient and they paid 70% of your bill, the rest of that bill for a subscriber would be, would be written off.
But it's like a subscription?
Right, Wake, Wake County EMS in North Carolina does it. There's several in North Carolina that do the program. We looked at that as a, as a possible revenue stream. The, the big question that we still haven't answered is Medicaid. It's illegal for us to charge Medicaid recipients anything beyond what Medicaid will pay. And so therefore, that's been the hiccup that slowed us down to ever even pursuing that because we have the extremely high Medicaid rate and the majority of our customers that we service are those.
Subscription, you probably discovered subscription wouldn't work because you'd get, depend on your budget, but that's, I would, that would work. You had a huge, huge number of people.
You have the population of Suffolk or Wake County that works. You have 10,000 people, that's not a very good.
Wait, just a, just a short version analogy, analogy from what appeared here. Is we won't, we don't want to do any duplication of one person, we'll say that's Joe Landau. We don't want a whole bunch of pilots holding stack and all. Because if he owns some properties, those properties, some of them may be vacant, all of them may be vacant, and there's nobody there that needs the services. So he'd be paying for something that would never exist. So we have to be careful there. But I think the first test is going to need to be per tax, per taxpayer. We're looking for exceptions for duplication or at least if we find a lot of different duplication situations, have some form of cap on it. I think, but I think the one thing that will cover the most people would, would start with the, with the taxpayer. But getting back to the person who's renting in Gates or Sunbury or whatever, they're going, they're going to use the services at some point, having never paid their fair share. So that is a, that's where we got to have the net. So it may be three layers of, of, you know, how they, how they're captured. It's going to be real easy to find.
That's why, that's why we felt the water bill was the most reaching. We knew that there were holes with the piano well, but it's the most reaching fare across the, across the citizens that are serviced.
And we don't, we don't want to reach, I mean, we don't want to reach enough just to hit that number. We want it to be equal.
I think it's got to be, it's got to be fair. County manager, in counties that use a fee, how do they come up with their list?
I've not researched that.
I think we need to research on that, you know, what they use. Because the same problems would exist in all counties that we are questioning nine. How can you make it fair and equitable to everyone, just not ones who are, have any water? I, of course, I know a lot of places have water and sewer and all that, but that's not, not the situation here in Gates County.
Well, it must be appropriate these fees, it's like the convenience site. That's $15 a month. And all those funds, whether they're used or unused, we, we never see them again. You know, they waste management. They have total control of this, this fund balance or whatever. Of course, if those funds are not enough to meet their current expense, they come back to us again saying they need a little more. And so it's one of those things where you, it appears you have no control over. And that's somewhat of a concern. But, you know, the water bill, we put it on a water bill, I think that our citizens right now are seeing a water bill that's probably about as much as they want to deal with. We have another $10. You know, that's probably not going to go over too well, but it may be a situation where we need to, to look at two options. And of course, they might look back on it twice, but some of it, we could, maybe have a small fee to the water bill to cover some of it. And then maybe we go to general assembly, if we had some of the land parcels for taxing. Because, you know, a lot of people, a lot of citizens, they're elderly, they have sixty-five houses. If you put another $10, $15 on them at the end of the month, it's not going to go over too well. At the same time, we possibly put some of our taxes in our land parcels as well. I would, I would suggest that county manager, work us up what it would look like to develop the district, put it on the utility bills, what that would look like in order to raise this $350,000 annually, including what the citizens are currently paying now. And also, if we take half of that and put it under a tax, a land parcel tax as we do with the partner. Let's see what our options are.
I agree, I think we need to see what our options are. And certainly, I think, Jack, you just added the phrase, I think you said $653 and you asked for $353, so these would not have to be as high as what the.
Based on, based on the $3,500 water bills, the $15 would be, well, I would take care of it. So it could be, such could be more like nine dollars.
But what, what we said in the original presentation was if you shoot for meeting what we're asking for now, there is no room for growth. Then you're in the situation where, Joe, on campus, right now, if they set their, their fee at a basic level and now they're providing paramedic-level service and they're, they're going backwards trying to bring their fee up today. And that was what drew your attention that night was, let's set this fee where we're going, not where you are, not what we're asking for today. That money that was asked for today was chopped in half on the board table so that we didn't lay $600,000 on your table at the time we laid. We didn't want to lay $353, much less $600,000 on your, on your table. The neighboring county candidate is paying $500,000 for an ambulance service right now today. One ambulance in their county. And we wanted to be able to show that we're trying to, to be a partner, not.
It would be, it would be better to be, if nine dollars would do it, it'd be better to be at 11 so you don't.
Right, so you've got.
So you don't have to increase it. Right, what?
Right, I don't want to come back next year and say, oh, by the way, we need to make this $12.
But you also had to understand that, you know, we do have a lot of people with place end homes. And, you know, there is a diminished returns where they might not pay anything on anything because they can't afford it. And we need to make sure that we capture it, all the citizens, not just one people.
The $3,500, you're right.
Yes.
Well, I, I believe in, we need to, county manager, research this.
Yes.
The General Statute on taxing does not permit the board to. to, and then the taxes to increase fund balance or to have a profit, so to speak. You have, you have, what you're funding, what you're taxing for has to be designated, uh, for your current expenses. And if there's something left over, it goes in the fund balance, but you can't say, well, I want to raise my fund balance, so I'm gonna tax everyone three cents more so I can build, that's not the way it goes, it's not allowed by the general statute to do that. Uh, whatever we come up with, if it's three hundred fifty thousand dollars, I don't believe the Lord is gonna allow us to say, well, I'm only, we're gonna collect six hundred thousand to allow for growth. But we would have to come back and we would have to, uh, uh, consider that each time that we needed additional funds. So I'm gonna make a quick check on those.
Yeah, I think if you would, that's, that's, too, you know, where I should include that documentation each time.
Okay, so I'll, we have requested, you get more information for us and see, and check on what all the counties are doing and who, how they're identifying people to, um, charge. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, next is about the historic courthouse, and we also have a handout that's this morning as well.
He's leading a package, it's a letter I received right after our February meeting regarding the structural assessment of the walls on the west wing. And basically, what I assessed out of this was that he was not as concerned about some of the bricks as others in the past have been concerned. But he recommended testing of the bricks, and he recommended ta, testing of the, um, stucco if necessary, as well as testing of the mortar. And he did recommend that if we do rebuild, part, he recommended building part of the wall and to use old bricks that have also been tested. I went ahead and contacted Mr. Crowe and asked that he send me estimates of the testing that he was recommended just so that you would have that information for you to review, and he sent that Monday evening, actually. So I did forward that to you, and that is in the handout that you have. And it would be a total of twelve thousand dollars for them to test existing brick, reclaimed brick, mortar, and stucco. It was a detailed report. And I did forward it to James Andreas just, um, since he has been the one who met with Mr. Crowe and has been doing the actual work, and he said for the most part, he agrees with what they wrote. Um, he said what he didn't see is how they would plan to repair the building other than doing testing, and I'd like to note that we just think that's not what they were asked to do. His question was, do they think it was necessary to take the west wall down and rebuild with the old and new masonry, do additional bracing and patch it back together, remove the steel that was installed, patch it back with salvage brick? He said those were some of the things that he would have as follow-up questions to Mr. Crowe.
Right, and then we'll go on to the last page of, uh, page seven.
Of which report, the?
The one, original one you said.
Okay.
What the recommendations are.
Right, page seven. Right, where it said, uh, afterwards, it's more stucco, if you then, if you jot down, it says, overall, we recommend that the extent of the structural repairs previously implemented to the east and west wings of the building be reevaluated, and that consideration be given to repairs that will minimally disrupt the original building structure. So, you know, to me, it was, it was a way of saying, uh, you need to look at what you're doing, but Natalie said he didn't give specific instructions on how to move forward. And, and that's basically what we need, um, you know, testing the brick and mortar and stucco and, and not giving a definite on whether or not the east and west wings need to be rebuilt or, or keep going in the manner that we're doing. It's just not clear.
Well, Commissioner Jordan, I think if you read, uh, at, at the beginning, he says the deviation in the east wing is on an inch and a half, and that was in the, uh, he didn't think that was any of the major concern, I can't, I thought I highlighted.
That's an inch and a half in mortar?
No, it did. The inch and a half, um, is on, I guess, the second page? My page number is here. Okay, it's page three. Um, defamation in the form of parrot bowl, which is number seven. Remotes prevalent in the lower half of the northern side wing of the west wing. Um, but then if you continue down, the bow jump server north wall of the east wing, I would displacement was observed to be approximately one half inch. The extension of this, um, defamation here, apparent of the old, the I would displacement was observed to be more severe on the north wall and side wall on both east and west wings. But it continues on, um, you know, they, he did not, the east wing, the northern side exterior measuring walls have an I would bow that was measured one, one and a half inches. Um, and they are much smaller on the side than the east side, but he talks about the east wing, there's no significant cracking, and, um, so he was pretty, pretty, he didn't think the east wing needed any water repair.
Well, I, I didn't quite get that out of that, but, um, you know, he described what the extent was, but then he did not definitely say that, hey, you know, this is, this is insignificant, or this is, uh, something that really doesn't have to be addressed, that, that was kind of wording, however, for, um.
What's he?
And that's why we're actually, overall, overall, he just recommended it, that we, uh, re-size it. Thank you, John.
I expect to go to page five, Bill.
And, and you recommend. Just about west wing.
That reinforcement in the east wing measuring is not warranted.
Okay.
Oh, and acceptable is, okay. Well, that's based on the foundation, if you reinforce it, east wing measuring is not warranted.
Well, if you're measuring, if you're measuring an, an apple's bow, that's one and a half inches. Um, I know there were excellent coffins, but some of that bow could be original, too, couldn't it?
Kind of what a region is.
Yeah. Doesn't mean that anything. Might've been, when the mortar dried, might've had a bow in it, might not be, like, a passage to it. When I look at that last, uh, on page seven, is he questioning, is he questioning something that's already been proposed? We recommend that the extent of the structural repairs previously implemented to the east and west wings of the building be reevaluated.
That was my interpretation, that he's questioned some of the work that has been done today.
Or, and we're recommended.
Right, and James Andreas made him aware and shared some information and documents with him while he was here that things that were recommended, some things were not implemented because we either, the construction company did not get to that point, because they did not feel safe, or as soon as they were recommended, the construction company said, no, that's not gonna work, and refused to carry them out, and they redrew the plans.
And they're, um, they're gonna go for overkill to protect their reputation, and they leave, they don't want anything to happen. I can understand that.
Well, there's always been concern, and you were remembering on previous discussions, uh, with James Andreas, about, uh, where you combine old materials, new materials, because of the, um, the, um, the difference in materials and the shrinkage and that caused movement in walls and all. And I know in historic preservation that they really try to match the, um, bricks, the age of the bricks, or with at least the same characteristics about the threes and fall and the movement, the expansion and contraction that everything's going to do.
A gentleman who made with us here.
Why, why couldn't we go back to Clearstake, their architect?
With this report.
In this report, all right, based on this seven J E report, what is your recommendation that we do next?
How would you fix the west wing?
Exactly, based on what he's come up here with. Because, uh, you know, what he, basically has to custom interpret it and determine what, what we're gonna do with it, he knows he's not specific. But we need specifics, uh, based on professional, uh, knowledge and, and professional skill on, on how to go forward, and, uh, I think Chris needs to digest this, he'll take, this is what it means, this is what we need to do, we say, go forward, use some reclaimed bricks, original bricks, and not worry about the inch and a half bow, and that's still there.
Because they're gonna have to design it.
They're gonna have to design it.
And force them, and his product being serious.
Andrews wants it designed by Clearstake, and Andrews can't say, well, we feel okay like this. Because they could say, we still disagree.
And they might, and, and Clearstake might want to have this, this test and done, so that they'll know what materials to recommend to use.
And, well, my question to, for this twelve thousand dollar recommendation, in your notice, it also says there's an additional forty-eight hundred dollars on the next page if another source of reclaimed brick is needed. I do not know where they will get the reclaimed brick to test. It was made very clear to Mr. Crowe, I thought, between conversations that I had with him, Andrew's Andreas had with him, is that the brick over there at the courthouse is very fragile, and that they do not come out in brick format, they come out in pieces. Because several places in both of these reports, he states, if the old brick can be reused, if the old brick can be reused, and based on what I saw and what James explained, it cannot be reused.
Well, county manager, you agree to go to Chris and have them look on this report and provide, uh, technical recognition, how to proceed based on the J E's assessment and recommendation?
I consider to that.
So our recommendation to you is, do, uh, do we need to have a full motion? Okay, um, Commissioner Jordan has made a recommendation that we forward this report to Clearstake for their input on what the, the great repair work would have to proceed.
Of course.
Accomplish.
I'll make that mention.
Yeah, that motion's been made, is I have, do I have a second? Motion's been made, second, be in all discussion?
It's been.
Yes, sir.
Um, Clearstake says our architect, do you think, asking them to look at this, does that add to the charge?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, motion's been made for us to, um, construct county manager, to forward, forward, uh, report of, um, Mr. Crowe, uh, to Clearstake, the architect, to see how you, they would proceed in reconstruction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
I'm sorry, I've got something I'd ask, um, I know you and Matt would have been involved. Did anybody say anything, have I missed it, um, along the way in the courthouse? About the, the sidewall, walking path in front of it?
No, no one said anything, um, you know, we have always concerned about drainage issue, um, but, um, no one has said anything about that. But I, I will say, though, since the trees have come down and since, um, they've opened up that drainage thing inside, water has not collected in the trenches that has been moved away from the building. Okay, moving on, planning board and board of adjustment texts amendment discussion. Ms. Baptiste.
Good afternoon. Um, these are just recent models of, um, for the changes that you guys have been requesting over the last couple of months. Um, I think I've got all of them caught up. Um, we had the, the particular changes that you guys wanted.
The only thing I received was, oh, sorry, I said, I got one.
There was one of them we didn't have last time, that you brought, I can't remember which one.
It was the board of adjustment. Well, actually, we reviewed planning board in January, then board of adjustment in February. Right, and, yeah, um, so we got any comments on the planning board in January and got those, um, cleared up and taken care of and bid draft, and the board of adjustment one, we looked at in February when we was at Quattley extension building, and those, those sheets were.
All right, I got one for you.
All right.
Thirteen oh two, planning board.
Okay.
I, number, uh, under B, it says legal resident.
Yes.
I don't know why we're gonna pick on Gates. Everybody who's a citizen of Gates County can live anywhere, including Gates. We a legal citizen who owns property in the unincorporated areas of Gates County?
Yes, and that includes people that live in the incorporated area of Gatesville. They just have to have like a part of the property.
But that's, but that's safer. I mean, you've eliminated, in that sense, you've eliminated anybody who lives in Gates.
But now, if they own the property in an unincorporated.
Property.
In an unincorporated.
A legal resident is a legal S, US citizen is one. And two, who owns property in the unincorporated areas of Gates County?
So like, um, Doug and Mark and Lily, they own the property outside of Gatesville, they still serve.
Okay, but if they live.
Have to agree with Jack, it, it's still, if anyone owns the house in Gatesville and nobody else, they can't, can't follow anything. I don't, I, I don't understand why that is necessary.
But see, they don't have a, 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 a zoning ordinance.
But they're, but they, but because they choose to live in the city limits, the town limits of Gatesville, doesn't make them ineligible to serve as a member.
But they make rules that they all have.
I would just say, you have to them in full, Chris.
In that same photograph where it says a legal resident and everywhere else, mentioned active members, but there's nowhere in here that said an active member has to be a legal resident. I, I think that probably ended up being changeable, but that's not what it says at all.
Well, I guess it would be a little hard to get here. Someone in Virginia, they couldn't serve, uh.
They're not resident in Gates County?
Right, uh, they could own property in. They could own property in Gates County.
Community duty.
So, they still wouldn't serve.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I think the first litmus test is a resident of Gates County. It's the first litmus.
Yeah, but Gatesville is incorporated, it's recognized as a, I guess, a municipality of its own and its own governing authority.
If somebody in, in the town of Gatesville wants to buy another piece of land in the town of Gatesville, and it needs to be rezoned, that, what?
They don't have it.
They don't have to come before you?
No, they don't have zoning.
Okay, so, does the town, does the town of Gatesville have any zoning?
No, they don't have any zoning in the ordinances.
So, if, so if I buy a piece of property in Gates, there's a new property in there, and I'm going to put 17 hog houses in it, in the town limits of Gatesville, there's not an ordinance that's going to prohibit me from doing that? And I don't have to get a permit from anyone to do it?
And you can build as close to your property line as you want to. They have, we don't enforce anything within the town limits of Gatesville in terms of our ordinance.
You don't think there's no exception to that?
Well, they may have something, but that is for their mayor. They have to see their mayor for all of their concerns regarding, regarding anything with individual property that's located within the town limits of Gatesville.
If, so if I want to buy a piece of land, another piece of land in Gatesville, and it requires a set type for the use that I want for that land, does that come before you?
No.
Okay, you don't have, I know there's a health part of it, you don't have any sign on it. Okay, so that piece of land is subject to the Gates County Health Department?
Yes, which is state, there's a state requirement. Now, if you're building something in the town of Gatesville, it's a house or anything, we do not do, I do not do a zoning permit where I review how far setbacks are.
But then you're, but then you're inspected.
He, he probably does, do they have an agreement? I'm not sure, but.
They got, they got an agreement.
Yeah, but in terms of zoning and the things that I normally do for the unincorporated area of the county, they don't have to do it. If, like I had inquiries about some people for a cell tower. I cannot enforce our cell tower regulation on towers that's going to be built within the incorporated area of Gatesville.
So, if our former county manager, Ed McGuffin, if he stayed up with all the rules and regulations and well versed on any of it, resides right here in Gatesville, he could not serve.
Unless he own property in the unincorporated area. Because I don't, and this is my personal opinion, I would.
Can I, can I correct you there? I mean, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not wrong, correct. Legal residents. Okay, go ahead. Only, only land outside of Gates, ownership, go ahead.
Right, and I agree with Ms. Appleton. To have someone that serves on the board that doesn't have a stake in the county ordinance or is not subject to the county ordinance ever, having them have sway over the county ordinance or somebody come in for variance that they have no clue, that they have, they don't require, they're not required to have a give variance because they're not under any of the restrictions of an ordinance, is really, is kind of unfair to people that's in the unincorporated area that have to abide by certain, by the county ordinance.
If they were only, if they were only board, they would have a clue, because they'd be serving with other people. It is a valid point that you're dealing with ordinances that you're not going to be subject to. I, I, I don't dismiss that, that is a valid point. However, I'm the commissioner of the district of Gatesville, and that person is not a one-person board, it's a board of how many members?
Seven.
There'll be six other votes. And we do, and this is one of the reasons that we try to keep people from all of the different districts of the county on those boards to make them equitable and fair. And so they get this sort of service representatives for what they hear in their area. So, I will admit that that is a valid point. However, that person serving as one of seven may be an equal valid point.
I mean, I'm still going to have a problem with Jack, I wouldn't even make those concessions. It's what I read me as, as a legal resident, if you live in the town of Gatesville and don't own land anywhere else, other than the town of Gatesville, you're not a legal resident of Gates County. And I don't, I don't. Well, that's what they said, this is a legal resident. And if you live in the town of Gatesville, you're not a legal resident.
I think, why do we use legal? Why can't we use participating resident?
That might be a debate.
Well, we're talking membership. Who's a participating resident? You know, does the general standard say that you've got to define this as a legal resident or participating resident? Billy said, you know, we're all residents of Gates County, but who can participate in this membership? Only if you've got, if you have property in the unincorporated area of the county can you participate. So, how do we get, maybe the legal term is a little bit too stringent. Because you're only talking about membership, who can participate in this membership? Not who is actually a citizen or resident. What is the problem with that?
I don't think you need a term legal resident. I think you need to just strike out resident, I mean, legal. You can just put a resident is defined as a U.S. citizen, a legal U.S. citizen. You know, I can see Jack's point. I know Trelawney County, Eden, big residents of Eden cannot sit on their zoning board for the county. Because they're not under their, I mean, they don't, they have their.
They're not subject to.
Subject to. So, they cannot serve, I believe it's eighteen. You know, I think, they might be, I can't remember. There's one that can and one that can't in surrounding counties.
So, under, under B, if we strike towards legal and just have a resident.
Is defined as.
Or should we say county resident? Or just leave it as.
County resident would be.
That county resident.
Well, the purpose of this ordinance, okay? County resident is defined as individual.
But if you put county, I think you're, Gatesville is in Gates County.
But well, well, it includes and then to exclude, so, I mean, that's okay. You know, if you want to start off, you're, but you're using multiple factors to decide qualification.
Counting to the membership.
But you have to meet all qualifications. So, that would be okay, if it said county resident. And you look, oh, gosh, I'm too exempting. And Ms. Baptiste, this is no reflection on you. I got a little passion going on here, okay? There's no reflection on it. We're just trying to do design of these things.
You have a suggestion for resident?
If you, because I mean, Commissioner Felton made a point of saying something about active member being in the next paragraph, if y'all want to just take out legal residence altogether and put active member in the places of legal residence in part B.
Active member in what?
Yeah, how you're, what, how do you classify that? How are you going to judge who's active and who's inactive?
Well, active member meaning somebody appointed to the board.
Well, once they're on the board, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Once they're on.
Well.
And, I mean, we want to be clearly defined, but sometimes getting over defined is something. I think it said county resident, for the purpose of this ordinance, the county resident is defined as an individual. And I want to leave one, just like it, a legal U.S. citizen. I think, Billy, I think we do need to keep word legal in that.
No, I think I stand, and I tend to agree with Jack, for the purposes of this ordinance, a county resident is this, just for this ordinance. I wouldn't have followed county.
And we're okay, everybody's okay with the four. Now, last time I said that current taxes can't be delinquent. Who does not have.
Any current tax, the ones that, that means.
Who does, who does not delinquent on the tax.
Yeah.
And if anybody wants to jump in there on two.
And I'm not, you know, I'm just making the point that, you know, there's like the rules for not that, they don't have to follow, which is, I mean, is fine, if you made a valid point, they're one of seven, however, you know, that seems odd to me. That, you know, I'm going to make rules that I don't have to follow. Yes.
I think one comment, I can't keep you doing this, Jack. Turn this thing around, you a county commissioner. Do you think that you should be able, if you live, need live in some area, should serve on the Gatesville Town Council? I'm going to turn this around and do, should I be able to serve on the Gatesville Town Council when I don't live in Gatesville?
Yes, sir.
I just thought of one second.
Point well said.
Okay, why is it a pleasure for the board?
Well, we're on, we're on the first page. We're on the first bullet point.
Yes, I know.
May I change?
Yes, sir.
I need one, and it's not the cause of number two. But I understand, and I appreciate the comments from the audience and from the board here. But, and I'm not, I'm not going to address that again. The time that I say that I need is none for that, okay? And I would ask fellow board members to weigh in on whether they want to vote on this now or whether they need time to review, if I may.
Well, I did have a couple of questions also, all areas, and certainly not. And not many, but I'll go on a couple of things, but anyone else have questions?
I've got many some things that just that I'd like to look at as well, you know, maybe rearrange a couple of things. I'd say nothing, nothing in substance as much as it is just easy reading.
If I may make a recommendation or suggestion, that at our next meeting on March 21st, we meet at six o'clock for a work session, and this be the topic of the work session. It's still an open public meeting, but that way it's more informal. You can directly address all your questions. And then when we come to the full meeting at seven o'clock, if this is on the agenda then, we can move more quickly through this.
So, would you like to suggest that, just that piece we hear for that, this company?
Yes.
Okay, so, we would have an entertainment motion to table this until a work session on March 21st.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion's been made, the second is that we have a work session at six o'clock on the March 21st to discuss the planning board as well as the Board of Adjustments. Saying that there's a lot of overlap in some of the, any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so that is table until the 21st.
Thank you, Ms. Baptiste.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, number eight, new business, forget update policy. I've already mentioned that she loves to give us things to, for white reading.
She really doesn't like it. It's one of those things that has to happen.
That is true.
We recently, we actually never we had a drug alcohol audit, and from that audit, these correction came about to make changes in the policy for the drug and alcohol. He said that in his testimony.
Okay, so I think we'll recommend, a recommendation that, can I, you be in?
Yes.
Okay.
And the changes are quite minimal, but to me, but if you look at the policy on page two, the change that's made for the policy is that in, on page two, at the top, section two, the first sentence was underlined before, and we were asked to take the underlining out. Right under that in section three, in definition. The next little last line that, paragraphs or whatever, where it says, the pages aren't numbered in what they have, does he appropriate the head in? Okay, so the, on the drug alcohol policy, where it's, what, section B, applicability. We look on the section two of that, where it says a safety sensitive function, operation of a public transit service. That sentence was underlined, and they asked for the underlining to be taken back out under, right under that, section C, or definitions, where where it says damage to headlights, taillights, transit, which is like the last pool centers in there, horns, they asked to take mirrors out, mirrors was in there before. If you go down a little bit further, where it says alcohol concentration, that paragraph was underlined, they asked to take the underlining out. Under council test, that was underlined, they want to take the underlining out. Going over to the next page where it says, what, I think, four, four down, Department of Transportation, the DOT. You took the underlining out of that paragraph. Two paragraphs down, under disabling damage. And that sentence, again, the last four sentence, where it says horns were tire available or damaged, you know, like they took out mirrors again. Okay, all over. Couple pages over.
It's like they wanted some underlining left in, but some they, there's plenty of underlining still, right?
Yes, and it changes from whoever's overseeing the project. Over in section I, drug testing procedures, on the number seven, where it said the split specimen will be stored at the initial laboratory. That paragraph was underlined, they asked to take that underlining out. Down the next one, on the J, alcohol testing procedures, section two. The third sentence where it said section Q, it was identified section. where it said section Q, it was, um, identified section Q, section four to five, they asked to take the section four to five out. And the last full line of that, section two, where it said section Q, was four to five, Q, section four to five, they asked to take that out, and just identify section Q. Um, down under K, pre-employment testing, two A, says, well, all, all persons of employment in safety system positions are conditional upon the applicant passing a drug test, and applicant shall not be placed into safety system position unless the applicant takes a drug test. It was drug and alcohol, so basically, it's alcohol for the pre-employment testing. And over in section, um, three, I mean, section C of that same case, um, where the first sentence says, if the applicant fails a pre-employment drug, it was drug and alcohol, they just said drug testing. Down in Q, I mean, down on section G of that same area, we took out underlining that. Then in M of post-accident testing, fatal accidents, um, on the second sentence, the testing, if they are involved in an accident with a transit, and it was revenue service vehicle, they took out revenue service, and just said a transit vehicle was off, or the vehicle is in revenue service or not.
Chris, I have a question.
Okay.
You said they'll, they changed it from drug and alcohol testing to just alcohol testing?
Just drug.
Just drug.
And that's for pre-employment.
Pre-employment.
Are they considering alcohol, the drug during that test, or are you still testing?
No, but because it's a pre-employment test, they don't have you testing for alcohol anymore, you just test for pre-employment for drug.
Alcohol freedom.
Alcohol freedom.
Drugs.
And they would be, would have made them the offer, and they would be performing a safety system function at that time.
Does it mean pre-employment, if you test me for drug, for alcohol, shows, can you, with security, can you deny me employment?
No, because the FTA drug screen, they only test for, um, a series of five different drugs, and that would be one of them.
And I have a question, will you, for the cost of assessment, and any subsequent review will be a sole responsibility of the app. Is that, does that stay in...
Where is this at?
Uh, under C, uh...
The cost, where it's underlined.
Where it says subsection G, the cost.
If they were to do a second test, disqualified or whatever, the cost of assessment.
It'll be a sole responsibility of the app.
Yes, um, if for some reason you fail the test or whatever, we refer you to a substance abuse professional, but it's at your own cost. We don't pay for that. That's actually throughout the policy, even if you're employed, we refer you out, but we don't, we have to refer you to a substance abuse professional, but we don't have to pay for it.
So the person comes back and reapplying for a job?
They, they can reapply.
And the drug testing will be...
No, okay, um, so if they fail the drug test, then we will refer them, they, they couldn't work if it's pre-employment, but if they were, um, existing personnel and they failed a drug screening, they will be terminated. But we have to refer them to a substance abuse professional for them to say whatever kind of treatment. They, they can or they cannot go. But if they do go, if they want to come back and reapply after they've gone through whatever substance abuse professional requires them to do, they could come back and reapply.
Have, have you had any complaints as pertaining to the odor or smell of alcohol by an operator?
No.
Only an operator?
Well, yes, only an operator, not by just a, a transit, but by operator or something.
No.
Good.
Wrong deal, I think.
And go to section M for post-accident testing, and I think it was fatal accidents, all covered employees will be required to undergo urine and breath testing if they're involved in an accident with a transit revenue service vehicle. They took out revenue service and just will transit vehicle, so it doesn't have to be some vehicle that we used, what Minister Ray, they still be, that's right. And then moving on to section U, um, for return of duty testing, um, where you see the underlining, the next sentence was also underlined, but they asked to take that underlining out. Under section Q, down for, to three, A, um, that first A was underlined, and they asked us to take that underlining out. Over to the next page for Q, section four, uh, if you go down to, let's see, the fourth sentence, it said he or she submits to a, um, non-DOT alcohol test. It was an alcohol test, but now they added non-DOT alcohol test. And for the, the last full sentence where it says month period, the employee will be removed from duty and referred to a substance abuse professional, just say referred, um, for assessment and treatment. Under, go over next to section seven, section E, the last, um, sentence where it says section Q, it was section Q, um, four to five, but they took out that and just said the whole section Q. And the only other thing that was added is we changed our substance abuse professional, um, to this gentleman, um, Michael Burton, and that was because the person that we had at court before, um, was a, um, federal certified, um, substance abuse professional, but no one there is now, so we had to find a substance abuse professional that made that one, and this was the closest professional that I could find. All the corrections to that policy.
Anybody else, did they make a recommendation on Michael Burton?
Um, that was the one that was used by a couple of other...
So he has experience?
Yes.
With your type of office?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone have additional questions for returning the drug and alcohol policy, substance abuse policy?
So next time she brings us this much information, she should be required to furnish the lunch. No, ma'am.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion has been made, second, to approve the changes in your policy.
And then the other policy, the cash handling policy, do you know any corrections to that policy?
Let's do this one, and then we'll do that one.
Okay, okay.
Any additional questions about the, um, drug and alcohol testing policy? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that was approved. Okay, look, that was really our fourth one, and I'm happy.
Okay, and the other one is the cash handling policy. Um, we were looking at it for some other things and made a few changes. Um, I think one of the big changes was, most of them were just in wording, but the, the change was that we, um, said that drivers do not have the ability to make change.
Isn't, isn't that middle part there?
Mm-hmm.
Money collected by each driver will be towed, drivers will receive a receipt from the office staff, David, is there a signature on that receipt?
Yes.
One or two?
Just one.
So if, if I wrote gets, and I gave the driver ten dollars, and the parent was two dollars, how would I get my eight dollars? Wouldn't I get it?
Correct change.
Take money?
Yeah, to have the correct change.
So I would be refused if I couldn't, didn't have two dollars?
We tell them that they have to have the correct change.
Are they aware that before they...
Yes, they are.
We make that call to them?
Yes.
When you go to New York at the caps, sometimes they don't give you change.
Yeah, make sure you have a lot of different nominations when you get in the cab.
Okay, do I have a, can I make a motion on the cash handling policy?
Chairman, I made a motion that we approved the cash handling policy presented to us today. Second.
Motion has been made, second, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have a couple of budget items for us, we have one in, um...
There's two, there's, excuse me, no, wait, one is actually, the first one is not really a change in revenue or expenses. The first one is actually a budget pass-through amendment for the grants from your volunteer fire department from Monsanto. Then there are two budget amendments, one in your notebook, one that was emailed to you, and you have a hard copy at your spot.
I don't have a key on the notepad.
You have to get several pages over, there's several documents to support the request of the fire department.
I thought I had it tabbed. Okay, let's take this, the first one, um, reallocation, revow, but for needed purchases, that, well, we could do them in order, I guess.
What numbers are they?
Let's do them in order, we'll do Euro, Euro five's pass-through first.
Number...
Nineteen. Okay, fortunately, they had someone to win the, um, a, the American Farm Brothers Community Program, and he designated your back, I mean, not your back, it's your fire department.
Your back is right above.
For the five thousand dollar, no, please, we're paying back on that, twenty-five hundred dollar, um, to receive that, and this is a pass-through, they could not get it directly because of the tax, except non-probable.
Chairman, I believe we approved budget number nineteen, sorry, budget amendment?
Motion, uh, no, a, a motion has been made to approve amendment nineteen, properly accepted, in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that one is approved. Moving on to amendment twenty, that is an increase in EMPG funding. Um, remember, we got some additional funds from the state, I believe, for emergency, is emergency management?
Right, it's one of the billies, it's, it's one of the EMPG grants, and there's an additional three thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars that was allocated.
And so, budget amendment, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, to, for budget revision number twenty?
Second. Motion has been made, second, to approve the budget revisions, number twenty. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Budget amendment number twenty-one, contribution from general fund, um, this is for, um, to reallocate capital project funds that were, um, placed in the tax department budget by error, that was typo. Any questions about, I mean, any questions or concerns about that?
So move twenty, that into the general fund?
No, sir, no, sir. Twenty thousand is being moved from the general fund, but also there was an error in the amount of money put into the tax department's advertising line. That money is also being moved so that we can complete some capital outlay projects, and then the remaining money is being put into the miscellaneous and emergency fund that's within the governing body's line item.
And that was twenty-five?
Twenty-five, it goes to capital outlay, and eleven hundred, three hu, eleven thousand three hundred fifty dollars in miscellaneous and emergency.
What's the second capital outlay?
Yeah, I don't understand the second capital outlay.
I'll have to look it up with the...
Here's mine.
No, I, no, I have to look on the spreadsheet to find out what the exact numbers are, because I don't remember them off the top of my head, like...
Well, it's the same number as...
No, it's not. I don't remember the exact, Sandy could tell you off the top of her head. The forty-eight, that, the twenty thousand, that is the last twenty thousand, that's the capital outlay, and the other's... I don't know that mine's up top of my head.
I would, uh, when have you come back to that one?
Valley eight forty is the, um, general fund, is transferred to capital improvement program, and actually, and it's, oh, no, wait, no, what, I'm sorry, no, you, two, that is to transfer to the capital improvement program fund, which does have our money allocated under general fund. And that is include, those numbers are included in the expenditure report that's at the beginning, those are the, where I'm looking for the account numbers. So it's being put into the general fund, and then for capital program, and then the other one is being directly moved into capital outlay. The capital improvement fund program is the first twenty thousand, the second twenty thousand is capital outlay.
So the improvement fund is different from the capital outlay?
Yes.
What page on the, uh...
Nah, what I'm looking at does not have pages, sir. I pulled it up in a different form, in a different form than what you have.
Okay.
You can look at, you know...
But you'll look under the account number.
Yeah, at the general fund.
It, the one I'm looking at says, not on the top, but at the very bottom of the page, page fifty-one of sixty-seven, which is the capital improvement program fund.
I see it now, it's on, uh, page twenty-seven thirty, in the, uh, financial report.
Are you looking under the expenditure statement or the revenue?
Expenditure. Capital improvement on, it looks like the courthouse, I think, oh...
No, there's a separate one in here for courthouse. That's the forty-eight account number, and that's capital outlay.
Well, there is a project thing, yes.
Yes. And that includes lighting in the courthouse, I think, which is being worked on, that includes the drainage issue that we have discussed behind the administrative building. It also includes any improvement work that's done with the EIC building, that sort of thing, so any capital improvements.
So we're just adding to that, because I see we still got an unencumbered, unencumbered balance of a hundred and thirty thousand?
Right.
So we're just adding to it in anticipation?
Correct.
And further thoughts?
Entertain a motion.
Is there something specific coming up?
We're going to fix the drainage issue and the steps and the segment behind the administrative building, because that is the risk and liability that's going to develop, and it needs to be fixed this year.
You have a motion yet?
No, I don't have a motion.
Have Chairman. I move that we put, um, number twenty, we put it?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, for amendment twenty-one, um, any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, amendment twenty-two.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve twenty-two.
Okay.
That's a give.
Any, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you for approving that, they called yesterday and wanted to know when the contract has been signed for the playground, and I said once the budget was approved.
Okay, and we have a, one on my desk was amendment twenty-three, reallocation of re-evaluation budgets for needed purchases, that is taken from the appraisal fees and you can see bones and offices wise, apartments wise, and advertising. Do I have a motion?
So, move to Madam Chairman, for budget revision number twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, personnel, committee recommendations, she's left. This is to approve a new position for the transit stat operator position. It was going to be a, that she has requested, and I just noticed that the job description was not included. However, this position is for a transit dispatch or operator job, and the personnel board did approve, get their approval for the job description and forgets to create this position. The position will be covered by current funds. That was one of the main questions when I was first approached about this position. The money is available in the budget and the person will be a dispatcher the majority of the time, but they will be a backup driver as needed. And I believe we saw, the whole board saw the new description in nineteen. Well, sometimes, if you can see the description.
We saw, you saw it in personnel.
No, we saw it in personnel.
Personnel.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adhere to personnel board recommendation to approve the operation to hire another person on the job description presented. Second.
Motion's been made in second, and I would say I remember this conversation in the personnel. Some of us intrigue things, they have to enter each day, it's time sensitive, and they need someone, a set of hands and keyboards to get entered the information, because it's time sensitive, it has to be done within so many hours. And then we'll get to be back on. Okay, a motion has been made in proper, so I can, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have a delayed reaction, don't we? Okay, uh, personal county has requested to the state legislative team or representatives that they eliminate the eighty percent solar tax credit. You see the letter that they sent to Mr. Cook, and you also see the.
One to Steinberg.
As one from Steinberg that they sent. As you well know, that was one of the credits that they got, gave to solar companies that they would not, we cannot charge, that they are relieved of eighty percent of the tax on their property. And of course, the state has already ended the thirty-five percent tax credit that they have received, but they did not do anything about the eighty percent credit that they eliminated on the, the equipment, on that's on the property. Yes. And certainly for counties, you know, every, that's a, they hear.
So, is that going to be basically incurred with curtaud and rescinding that tax credit? Or including rescinding of the tax credit that would be allowed by electrical system?
Yes, so that we could charge eighty percent, just like they charge and present.
Chairman, I have a strong, real strong feeling either way, looking at this, we haven't heard, has anybody heard or read an email from Mr. Cook on what he has found on this? I mean, we're, what we're doing is we're looking at a document, a curtaud, and if we offer any support in it, we're only basing it on what we see in this letter. I don't dispute necessarily any of it.
Well, instead, a lot of articles in papers, newspapers across the state, concerning it from counties where they have had large solar farms going in, and a lot of times these are counties that are, have revenue challenges, and that eliminates that so, an old stream of revenue where a lot of land's been taken over, you know, the electrical equipment. If the state is starting with the tax credits, they say, why don't they, they didn't, why can't they relieve the tax rate for, but the counties have, the burden is on the counties. But we can take it under advisement, we can do additional research, but it is, there is a lot of discussion across the state.
Now, currently solar farms have an exemption or a reduction in their tax rate. The land is leased, so we still, we still able to tax the land itself, but as far as the panels and equipment is, that is what is. Same. On, on page two, at the top, they actually give an example. They said, instead of a one million eight thousand dollar combined business personal property tax deal, in other words, that's the evaluation of one particular incident, I guess, or no, six of all of them. Curtaud will instead collect taxes based on two hundred and one thousand six hundred due to the eighty percent exemption. Then they say the gap of these two collections itself equates to almost two cent of rate in curtaud's forty-eight cents per dollar. We have our tax collect here, it's like, do you know what our front land use exception is on our farm marketing? How the percentage is it? Eighty percent?
Well, actually, yes, sir, it's based on the soil type with regard to present use, and that has been, as you mentioned, a big controversy with the eighty percent reduction on those, what we cannot collect for the, the panels and the equipment, so.
For, when we're using land for farm, if it's assessed value is a hundred thousand dollars, we would probably pay taxes on twenty thousand, is what I'm getting at.
Oh, yes, sir, as a maximum of twelve hundred dollars an acre for open land, based on soil type. It, it is tiered based on that soil type, class one to, up to class five, if you will. The maximum is twelve hundred dollars an acre for present use. Now, on the market side, we may reflect five thousand an acre and upwards, you know, based on that, but on the average, just five thousand dollars an acre, you know, for open land.
Solar farms, are you aware, if, if when they come in, we take that land out of land use and farm land use?
That is correct.
And it's taxed at the assessed value of.
That is correct, at market value. Now, oddly enough, with the reappraisal, we will have an opportunity to address that in our schedule, we'll need to define those commercial rates specifically. Right now, what we would run is the rate that we would have for, for the market rate, which would be forty-five hundred, five thousand, based on the soil type again, as it produces. We'll have an opportunity to, to break out a commercial rate. Now, what that will be, a lot of counties have just, Washington County, Pasqua County, they have retained the theory, they're, they're just gonna, in a non-reval year, they're gonna retain that five thousand dollar rate per acre. But you're right, the rollback is created because they lose their stipulation. Now, there will be some solar farms that, that may qualify with the, the sheet grazing, but they will, they will have to wait a period of time because we've already created that hill for rollback, so they can't just reapply unless next year, there'll, there'll be some delay for them, you know, to, to reapply and get that status if they have low-impact livestock, like the sheet grazing, that I've seen kind of in a few farms, even in Hurford County as well.
I would, I would think that the primary use, even with the sheet grazing, I would think the primary classification would be commercial. And that that would drive the rate with no, with no reduction or no classification based on soil type, I mean, if it, if the land were holding up a solar, soil type would not matter and the, and the sheet would not matter.
You're exactly right, because we would, we would run a commercial rate much like we would on a cell tower site, which oddly enough, we don't have those addressed in our schedule either. We'll, we'll address that this year, whether we break out thirty thousand an acre for that tower site, if you will, you're absolutely correct. We, we have the opportunity to address it as commercial and, and put a, a figure, if you will, evaluation per acre, regardless of soil type, regardless of the livestock influence. We, we have that capability as well, and with the, the schedule, we can define that specifically, so we are uniform with our appraisal throughout the county for solar farms and for, for, you know, farms in general and vacant land.
But this eighty percent tax rate, it doesn't deal with the land, it's just dealing the equipment.
That is correct.
The panels, and it has nothing to do with land.
That's important, we're not losing the revenue specifically, probably gaining some because we're taking a lot of property out of farm values, right, and putting it into commercial.
That is one of the points that Dan Scanlon, the county manager from Curtaud, made. He said, but when, for Curtaud County, they felt like when they looked at this one million to two hundred thousand dollars, that was enough for them to take this step, to pass that resolution, he said, or to send this letter. He said, are they thinking that this will take place overnight? He said, no, but he's hoping that eventually the eighty percent will be repealed. He said that what they would be satisfied is that this year is twenty, eighty percent, next year seventy, and it would roll back to eventually, maybe in ten years, or however long it takes, then they're taxed at full value.
I guess, you know, the tax, the tax credit is basically an incentive for the solar companies to come as well, and to kind of spur, and on development. We're losing the opportunity for revenue, but not necessarily losing revenue, is my point.
But we could gain revenue.
Well, and we want to do that. At the same time, the intent is to provide solar companies with an incentive to move forward, to help provide an alternative source of electricity.
Then we do quite well in North Carolina, we do that.
Well, and, and we are, you know, I don't have a problem with a letter, but I think it would be more aggressive, in other words, instead of taking the eighty percent away the first year, but it's, kind of, as you pointed out, it's something that, you know, after.
It's time to happen overnight.
You know, after companies here for a while, you know, they should be able to fully participate in, in the tax assessment, so. You know, sometimes when you get, when you sign on to something, it can be hard to back up a little bit. I wonder if we should, there's a pretty good explanation in the letter that he said. Should we consult Mr. Cook and see how many other counties he's hearing from, how many counties agree, how many have a same situation? I think our letter should be generic, you know, to support that, you know, we believe we encourage us, let him, and, and the county may tend to agree, recognizing that, you know, if it's not implemented immediately, that it would be implemented over time to repeal it, to where the counties would benefit from the, the property baggage, I mean, the baggage equipment. They are specific, it's specific to them, I don't see how we could basically federalize their letter and say, hey. Actually, we could take, we could take this letter under advisement and, and see what's going on. You know, it's, it's ironic, I wonder if you guys noticed, the emails that we get on solar farms have been, have been a whole bunch of them in the last six or seven months. But they're all coming from one, the majority, I should say, are coming from one particular person and group, and I'm not so sure they don't, it's not coming from some, some acts that they choose to grind, I, I've talked to you about that a little later, but they, where I see emails coming from, I believe some is stuff to say, they say, and some is stuff I don't believe they say.
Okay.
I, I think I'd rather, I think I, my opinion would be to take the letter under advisement. The integrity of the letter, I trust the integrity of the letter. From an economic, from a person who is interested in economic development, I don't want to just piggyback on something there that calls me something, a position later on, the odds against the latter, so. Well, we just still have to, Mr. Cook, and tell them we received this, this letter and ask what their thoughts are. Is there any other information to?
Well, how would you say we can contact our delegation, just, I forgot to send it to cook, but, delegation?
Start with.
And, and since the state has eliminated the tax credits for solar farms, what is the status of the eighty percent tax credit that has been, the elimination of eighty percent of the property tax on for the counties? What is this position?
Where's the government?
Where is it? Because you have to think like this, this is a source of revenue for the county, and it's not a burden on the, you know, if I'm in business, I have to pay taxes on all my equipment that I use, farmers have to pay taxes on all their equipment and buildings and well, as well, that they have, so shouldn't this business as well have to pay on their capital, since it has, I mean, they seem to be flourishing. I mean, we can send a lot of requests and what is lost?
If you take away all the perks, you might stop. Well, if we stop what we like, yes, you know, they're, they're popping up all over the place because of many of the perks for solar farms.
But they have to be self-sustaining at some point.
Sure. You know, a lot of that's driven by utility rates, utility companies pay solar farms a certain rate, and they, their rates are governed basically by the state. I think one of the things that's hot for saying, and I can agree with it somewhat, is as long as there's such a yap that, they will never try to be self-sustaining.
Is there some rationale?
That's real.
But, you know, we can table or we can send a letter just asking for Senator Cook's position or thoughts like that.
I might would even suggest that Senator Cook, ask him to pay a visit to Gatesville and meet with the chairman and county manager, talk about foster kids.
Yeah, that's one.
Thank you, Marty.
Oh, we saw him, I was really old then.
Yeah.
This is very informal, was a ranking, if you can be precise.
No, I was just trying to figure out what the problem was here. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't understand the problem, because it certainly won't get to the county, to everybody in the county that benefit us, and of course, I'm a hundred percent against subsidies to start with. And so I can't understand what the problem is if we're just acknowledging that letter and going along, going away with the subsidies. And, you know, like Harry Duck said, I don't understand what the problem is if I can understand the problem, because I think the more kind of money we get, the less money that the rest of us has got to pay. And at one point in time, we're gonna have a lot of free energy, a cheap energy, but we're not gonna have the land to put food on, so we're gonna starve to death.
I can agree with what Avery said first, with change a little bit after Jack was talking with you. First, when they're sending the letter and tell them that we are certainly leaning in the direction of supporting this letter, I think for Cameron Law, in support of this recommendation on eliminating the subsidy and to realize that it will not take place instantaneously, but over a period of time. That we are more interested in moving the subsidy than letting everybody pay their way.
And acknowledgement of the letter and give Senator, our legislators, an opportunity to give some feedback as to where they stand on. You know, my concern is that, basically, what you said, Billy, but when you take this letter, how would our letter be constructed? You know, they've done a lot of research. I'm sure that most of their research is accurate. But the only thing we can do is acknowledge it, and basically, they'll be interested in it and certainly, we concur on the ability to pay more revenue for the county to go to their position.
I bet we recommend that a county manager draft the letter, and then we can look at it on the March twenty-first.
Ted, I'm still confused, drafted to which way? Is that to be made in the motion, because I've heard two different schools of thought.
And while we're saying that, do we know what other counties, have any other counties ever said that?
Well, all the counties that were at the meeting, well, actually, Dan brought this up at the Abrahams Commission meeting as well. So I don't know if he sent this letter to all ten counties that are part of the Abrahams Commission, but he did specifically talk to Gates, Perfumans, Pasquauck, and Chawan about this letter because of the number of solar farms that's in each of these counties.
Chairman, I would make a motion that we submit a letter to our legislators, acknowledge the receipt of the Currituck County letter of concern to our representatives, and that we would tend to concur with the ability to receive additional revenues from the increase from the removal of the tax incentives presently allowed for the equipment or electrical systems.
Okay, a motion has been made to the knowledge of the Currituck County letter to representatives, and that we tend to concur with the removal of tax incentives.
Tax incentives on the electrical systems?
On electrical systems.
So.
On the solar electrical system.
We've got a man in.
Yeah. Okay, motion has been made and, Commissioner Freeman.
Commissioner Felton.
Felton, okay, Commissioner Felton and Secretary. Any additional discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay, our last item, this is a solar farm ordinance, please, Mrs. Baptiste.
In July, well, in June, I was given the task of getting, doing an update to the solar farm by this board, and you have a copy of what the planning board has approved and is forwarded for your consideration.
A couple of notes. Under J, on page two, I guess. Under J, it says bond or letter of credit, a bunch of you players, should be pledged to match twenty-five percent of the total cost of the project. Is this basically standard across board, which you found in other places, or?
This is what the planning board decided to set as their threshold, at twenty-five percent.
And what does this, what does this do? Does this ensure final construction, or just what is this?
Well, they were seeking to hold the bond until the project is decommissioned and use the bond as a way of providing for the decommissioning if it was not done by the facility.
The bond will be held for years and replaced to the county.
Yeah, like a escrow bank?
Yes.
Also under, two, item F two, on the next page, which is block size and setback. So the minimum setback distance of one hundred feet for all property boundary lines shall be required on all solar farms in any zoning district. Now, the setback of a hundred feet, normally, they're required to have a fence. Are we gonna put that fence at a hundred foot back as well in the area? Because that fence, that can be a little bit, not aesthetically pleasing as well. But, you know, they can set it back a hundred foot, but have that fence right at the neighbor property.
If you look on the screening, which is G one, you'll see that it states that the fence shall enclose the entire area. So the entire area would be at the property line, not at the one hundred foot setback line.
I have passed others, and some fences are set back, and they have green area and shrubbery or green area in front of it to kind of act as a screen, but it's easier by cutting and, you know, around fences sometimes it's a little difficult.
I was just thinking that you wouldn't want the fence right at the property line, but of course, I guess they're gonna, if they're gonna use, put sheep out there, they're gonna wanna use that for grazing as well, as much property as they can. Now, those are my observations, I would. Also under screening, under capital letter B, it says a six feet distance shall be maintained between the planting strip and fence line. Maximum, well, I guess it doesn't matter, you just want six feet. Thinking what is the maximum of six, minimum, or is it minimum of six foot?
Yeah, oh, you're under two B.
Two B, right. Or it says a six foot distance shall be maintained between the planting strip and the-
That would be a minimum. The rationale behind that was so that grass cutting, lawnmowers could get between the fence and the planting, so that you don't have an area where you have, where it's too tight and you can't keep the grass trimmed, and you have an area with excessive grass right at the beginning or the front of the property.
A minimum, so.
Minimum, yes.
It's going on like you plant there, because if you can't plant like a cyclone cycle, so they have circumference.
They'll be on top of it.
They'll be on, yeah.
Exactly, as well as, making sure that the trees aren't crowding the fence as well, but they-
What may it go, go or right there?
Well, we should get some kind of weed eater or something, you know, some kind of device to make sure that the grass stays maintained at the fence line.
I can tell you, if they plant these trees that you have in mind, they won't have any grass. I got ten of them in my house, you might worry about any grass under it.
But if it's right over against the fence, it might be, I mean, you-
Yeah, I follow. It'd be very better. Okay, so what I'm hearing under screening is there will be a fence, no less than six feet in height, and and then we'll go back up to F two, minimum setback distance of one hundred feet.
But now you're saying the fence, and then you want to have a hundred feet setback?
No, I think she's saying that the fence will be-
Six feet high?
Six feet from, six feet from the- And then a six feet shall maintain between the-
I want, I guess what we want to know is, here's a property line. We're gonna take every property line. We're gonna go to a hundred feet. What is that, what can be in that hundred feet, the shrubs?
The shrubbery can be in the hundred feet, but the actual panels can't be within a hundred feet of the property line.
Yeah, I would like to see the fence at a hundred.
The fence is there from the property line, huh?
And that's kind of the way I read it, actually, Jack, is that if you set it back a hundred feet, and then the fence-
Plant your fence.
And then, and then the fence has to be six feet high, and it's six feet.
And the shrubs, and if the fence is set back a hundred feet, I would feel comfortable with the vegetation, the screenings being inside that. But the question is, does the, does the screening? If we set the fence back a hundred feet, we haven't designated whether the screenings can be at the highway or the fence, have we? Because if you make, if I own this property, you may be setting my fence back a hundred feet, which I am definitely in favor of. And if they're gonna come and play ball and make money and get incentives and tax credits, let's give it what you want. So I'm okay with a hundred feet fence. But if I own, you know, the railways want to include, will be on my property, so it won't matter, but unless you tell me, I may want to put sheep or something out there outside that fence with another, different kind of fence, you see what I'm saying? So I think we should tell them whether the vegetation is immediately outside the fence or anywhere in that hundred foot line. You following me there? I mean, because if you go back a hundred feet, and my, the highways, let's say, let's say we're dealing with a property line that is adjacent to the highway. Do we want?
Screen.
Do we want the screen right by the highway, or would we screen set back within six feet of the fence?
I think it should be set back. These vegetation screens, if you set the fence back a hundred foot, the vegetation screen could be, could be within, on the outside of the fence.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it outside.
Hey, I want it to, that'd be on the outside.
Right. So vegetation screening should be within six foot of the fence, within the hundred foot setback. If you're within the hundred foot setback, you've got your fence at a hundred foot, and then you've got your screen between that hundred foot and the fence, within six foot of the fence.
And then you just have level grass.
Do we want to say within six, six feet, or do we want to say six feet?
Well, I think it, I would probably say, if you've got that much setback, it would probably add to the scenery if you allow a little more than six. I would probably say ten to even fifteen feet on the fence.
No closer than six feet. Fifteen feet, no closer than six, with that, how would you guys feel about that?
You know, if you've got trees or seers or whatever, it gives them a chance to expand, and not be all in the fence.
Vegetation shall be outside of fence, fifteen feet, but no closer than six feet to fence, huh?
Maybe, maybe fifteen feet of fence, no closer than six.
It did fifty, which you might have to put in something in there too, because the rest of that border has to be maintained, and not just growed up in weeds.
You have to be seventy-two, same ordinance as at residency.
Residency, seventy-two.
Sir, I think you want to have to put it in, I am.
What is the orders we have that maintains the grass cutting of that?
Just for residents.
Desert use, I think, yeah, that's-
Yeah. Probably your representative's requirements of the use of orders for maintaining all grass and vegetation.
If you represent, Baptiste, I would put the ordinance number in there.
Now, this goes only for solar farms, it does not cover people who have solar panels. Okay, because I said, you said it had to be ten acres or more. Is there any restrictions, there's no restrictions on the size, maximum size?
For the total farm? No, we didn't put in a maximum.
And was there a reason for that?
I don't think we, I don't think we had a reason, I don't think we even really discussed with the maximum.
We have, currently, we have three. You want, you want the acreage to start?
No.
Mrs. Beasley is-
One thirty something acres is enough.
And on the inspection bank, they tell us how much size it's on, because none of them, they haven't-
I think, I think the largest one, I think, is right around the thousand, I think. Yeah, I think, it's either, we either have one at a thousand, or I'm thinking about the one that was on the last-
There was an application for fifteen hundred.
Yeah. That may be the one that I'm thinking about.
Mrs. Beasley, can I ask you, do you, could you tell us what this acreage is, the one that you're, out of your house?
Well, the whole farm was, I think, was about sixty-six acres, but part of the woodland, they did not utilize.
They couldn't because it was wetland.
So yours is in operation, correct?
I'm assuming so, they're supposed to be moving the rest of their equipment out today.
Okay, the one there, one fifty-eight, Sugar Run, that, is that completed?
I don't know, that one was started before, and I don't remember. I think they just said that they did a final on it, but I'm not one hundred percent sure.
The one, the John Year place, or the Hill one, I think is the one that is not completed. They have some issues-
Is that?
Uh-huh, it has some issues with the on record.
Yeah.
Well, I think, um, since we got just the day, do y'all... Does anyone else have any questions? Do, do you think we need to study it more?
I think that if it makes those qualifications that we just talked about.
I, I would, I think I would like to have a size element.
A size element?
A size element in, in, and we'd have to be a recommendation from the planning board, we could, we can make that, uh, decision each day. And I don't even, to me, I mean, this has a, it's gonna have a date on it, so it's gonna be this day or whatever day going forward that we approve it. So we don't even have to focus on the fact that there's one for sixty-six acres that exists and another for thirty-six, we can just come up with...
Well, you ha- you still have to have a public hearing on it.
Okay.
And, um, a reminder of...
You have to clean it up, clean up.
Yeah, the cleanup, you have to have, we have to advertise it, um, do the public hearing. And, um, just a reminder, the, um, moratorium is gonna be expiring at the end of this month. So if y'all wanna extend the moratorium, we need to discuss that, if y'all wanna extend it for one month or, you know, I'm just giving you the options.
Um...
I'll make a motion that we extend the moratorium until, until we make the final approval of this on...
It, it would have to be a date specific, whether one month, two month.
Say sixty days.
Yeah, sixty days.
We'll have to advertise that.
Okay, a motion, is that a motion?
Yes.
Uh, mo- a motion to demand a commission to send the moratorium for sixty days.
And I'm saying a motion by the chairman.
Commissioner Freeman, sign it and discussion.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for, um, this Baptiste email that the commissioners do the acreage of the current pre-existing ones. And, um, and if you can give us the requested acreage for any applications that have been submitted, whether they're approved or not, that would give us a feel for what they're looking for and what they actually did. That's all I have.
Okay. The motion on the floor is for extension of the moratorium. Um, yours is just, just a request for information. Um, any discussion about the promotion? Hearing none? All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then...
I wonder if this will be brought back.
Uh, the twenty-first, do you need to cover during the work session?
Well, it's something about your hands are made, the sixty day extension, you don't have to go that far soon as you're ready.
We'll, we'll still advertise the moratorium, um, just in case y'all do feel y'all need that sixty days and do it as a public hearing for the extension. And then if y'all feel comfortable with it, y'all do not have to, you know, y'all can just take it off the public hearing agenda or whatever, and, or unless y'all feel that y'all need the sixty days for, for extension.
Okay, and you want to make sure I heard it correct. If, my thing is a day, if we advertise a public hearing, we've got to have it.
Well, y'all can either, y'all can either, no, you could, um, take it off a council or public hearing, you know, just say...
Public hearing has a day, but Joe Smith puts it on his calendar. He's expecting that to occur. He may not see the rescinded public hearing.
Y'all rescinded during the meeting, y'all go into public hearing and then they not just say, um, we're pulling this, pulling this item from public hearing.
Try, try, let's try to move on that court. Um, if you will clean up what's here, we can look at it at our work session on the twenty-first. But I think we still will need moratorium, 'cause we still, we'll have to have a public hearing and, uh, and we don't want to be anytime lapse in between. So we can have the moratorium and if that doesn't, 'cause you don't know what will come up and we might see something else in the timeframe and, um, because we don't have to come to really...
She's not gonna put that in. We're gonna have to go to the public hearing, is my opinion, because we can't, 'cause we can't, even if we make a decision, if we collectively agreed on something in twenty days from today, and we've announced a public hearing, the public hearing is for the public to speak. We can't make a decision until that public hearing, 'cause then we could just be avoiding, say, we're gonna give you an opportunity to speak, but we've already made a mind of it. We can't prove anything. Well, that's a public hearing.
Well, once the changes are made, um, we'll okay them, but you still gotta go through a public hearing.
I don't know, I don't know if we...
I think there, I think there's two different
Yeah.
things going on, trying to be intermingled in the one right here.
You gotta impose...
You have to have a public hearing to extend the ordinance. And that has to take place on the twenty-first, because it expires at the end of the month. So you gotta get into payment on this thing.
And then there has to be a separate one to approve, a separate public hearing for this.
And we don't have to do that.
So you have to have two.
Yes. Okay, so we have straightened.
Yes.
And we have voted on the moratorium, you're going to advertise it, we'll have a public hearing on the twenty-first.
Yes.
And then we can, we can have that time to work on, clean it up.
Sure, we still have it.
The moratorium that we just approved, we will make sure that the, the specific that they understand.
Is sixty days.
Okay.
Yes.
And then you can, even if this is a, if, if the commissioners review this and they say it's okay, then it's... I don't know, there might not be enough time to advertise before the April meeting, so it might not come up until the main meeting. So, well, we'll get it.
Well, we would, I think we would have enough time, it'd be close.
Yeah. Okay, so...
Yeah.
Okay. That ends the new business, um...
New development, yeah.
Oh, you have to hand out the vote?
Yeah, you moved it on everything.
We got voted, I was, okay. Okay, we'll go comments, citizens' comments, or are they...
I mean, this one, I have. Yeah.
Under oath, this is.
Um, I'm chairman, and I'll last...
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Our last work session, uh, we discussed the school board request, uh, that commissioners, uh, rebuild a new middle school. And, uh, based on the discussions, the information that we reviewed, we decided that it was, uh, we would need a motion to formally request the Gates County Board of Education to submit, uh, a request to the commissioners, requesting funding, uh, to build a new middle school, so that we could move forward in, uh, initiating a tax referendum.
Okay, uh...
Have we received the request?
No.
The request has not been sent. We've not had a motion to...
This is the motion, I'm making a motion, so that we formally request the Board of Education to submit a formal request to the Board of Commissioners, uh, requesting funding to re, to replace Central Middle School, uh, so the commissioners can move forward, uh, and request this act, this highly added tax referendum. And of course, the general statute, I don't have that number one, two, three, eight, I think, one forty-nine, Mary. Check that number, make sure that's correct. I'm not sure if that's right.
Okay, you heard the motion that we request the Board of Education, uh, send us a request for a building of a new middle school. Do I hear a second?
Second to the motion, I'm chairman.
A motion's been made in property second. Um, my question is that we are not going to, that if the Board of Education would come down and say if they want renovations, we would not consider that.
Certainly, they, they came back with, uh, request of renovations.
So do we want to say a request for what they, their request for, we need a request for them concerning their plans for the future of Central Middle instead of saying rebuild building?
Well, maybe the funding for middle school. But I don't believe we would need to have a tax referendum to do the, uh, rent, the modeling or recreation. Uh, but build a new school, certainly.
Yeah, that's, that's a requirement, right around.
Okay, that's just a question.
And once we get the request and we issue a resolution to submit that to the board of election, they would leave that seven five eight prior, uh, to the next election.
Well, we'll have one in June as well.
So what, what actually we're looking for is a formal request for...
Uh, we have a formal request on the future of Central Middle School.
And that's the way the general statute written, that the, the school board requests commissioners, they put their request forward, and then the commissioners can move forward and make this a referendum on it.
You've heard the motion and second, any additional discussion? That we may, we ask the Board of Education to make a formal request back to us. Hearing none?
Um, uh, they would also need to provide the estimates.
I know, 'cause we have, we got to have cost estimates.
Yes, because we'll have to have a specific tax increase amount that would be needed in order to do the funding, that would have to be on ballot as well.
They would need to give us costs when we would have to figure out the tax.
Would they want all, would they want all that at that time? We just want the request, so we, we know what to expect.
At least the total cost, you know, whether it's gonna be fifteen million, sixteen million, or based on the companies that they've already gotten into this one, we need to know if they're, not necessarily, um, how much the tax increase, so we'll, we'll figure that.
We'll have to, uh... Okay, the motion is on that we request that the Board of Education to formally request what their vision is for Central Middle School, and to have cost estimates included.
A specific cost estimate.
A specific cost estimate.
You got three, which one is it?
Uh, oh.
Second proposal.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I would like to see from the Board of Education a vision of where that would be, a in fifty years, because Central is just the tip of the iceberg with the age of our buildings.
Dr. Williams is supposed to bring without any further information.
Okay, well, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, citizens' comments? Y'all just tired, y'all ready to get out in the mud?
You didn't get the list, Lynn.
I didn't get the list, I didn't see, are we turning it on? The list?
Check.
Well, I started out with nothing. I had one simple thing that I was gonna say. And Jack, thanks to you, thanks to you, first of all, uh, maybe I'll not say this, I mean, I will say it. Y'all should get Son of the Cook on Steve Dial and the Smartphones. So I just went out there, got your information for you.
Okay.
And I want to put it on the record. The Son of the Cook is in favor of eliminating the eighty percent cap of whatever, how you want, but live doorway with taxes, so we can get what. Son of the Cook is in favor of that. Of course, you know, we in a short session and nothing is gonna happen anyway until next year. And I think some of you spoke up about when we took a discussion and rediscovering this Kerry Doug Lowder that went on forever, uh, doing it in stages. Well, here's the problem. Uh, it's not a problem, but Jack, but here's what's gonna happen, and I think you sort of alluded to it, all of y'all did. It's gonna be, if it's done, it's gonna be done in stages. The previous General Assembly, and going back to, I don't know, two thousand and ten or whatever they did, uh, created this tax credit of eighty percent. So quite honestly, we've got our attorney in here now, and also politician, uh, family politician. They can't just go up there and promise these people this eighty percent and then come back and do legislation to do away with the eighty percent. So this is what some of y'all were talking about, that was really over and beyond your control and my control. It's all up to the General Assembly, no matter how you like the letter. But anyway, the idea right now is, is, is they going to think about this gradually, doing away with it to see that they can, uh, avoid lawsuits and this kind of thing. But it won't be brought up until next year's session, regular session, it will be brought up. Now, back to your love. He could not write, but he told me it didn't make no difference. I mean, you know, Kerry, it makes a difference when they go next year. If you want it, if you want to get more revenue for the county, and which I think you should, it makes sense to send the senator a letter, recommend, send you supportism, because the people that do support this are gonna go in and say, well, this, I heard from all my counties, and my counties want this. And it's gonna look bad coming in here and say, well, we want, we want to give the solar people tax credits. Heck, we don't want the tax, and we don't even need the money, so much for that. Jack, I got all these notes I gotta go back. I know you hate me. But anyway, this, uh, you know, it's always, what to say, three sides to every story. And, uh, but, and back to the town council and being on the planning board and the Board of Justice, and I spoke up about what I said in public back here. Um, there are two ways to look at this, and y'all were discussing it next meeting, and I can go either way. I'm good at that. But, uh, the people in the, well, there's about three hundred people in Gatesville pit, something like that, maybe two something. Um, they live in all, the rest of the county surrounds them, so I'm taking it up to your side of the story now. And that is the fact, that just because they live in this little village of Gatesville and have no say so as far as what the planning board or the Board of Justice do outside of the county that they live in. And so I see, I think you're making a point, you never really made this point, but I think you were trying to make this point, that them is Gates County citizens. Now, back to town of Eden, well, Elizabeth City is a better example, because half of the population of past the town counties is the city of Elizabeth City. So it's actually a, a city. You know, Gatesville is kind of hard to say, that we would call this a metropolitan area. So I'd see what you're coming from, Jack, and I'd sort of support you. And one more argument to this is the fact, a lot of people don't know, that you do not have to live in the district that you're a congressman in. And so, you know, that's a little point of the Constitution that's overlooked sometimes and it pops up. So, you know, uh, I wouldn't say that, and you might even discuss that next month, but that's my opinion. I can go both ways, but I understand, these people here in Gatesville, living in the county, they have to look at the other things that are being done, and they should have a say so, is what you're saying, or what you leaning toward. And I would say I would agree with that. That ain't what I come for, but anyway, thank y'all. What I want, do want to say real quick is, I really appreciate this Board of Commissioners and Linda Hawke as chairman. Um, of course, Pitt was, growing up as a little boy, but it's amazing to me, being the oldest one here, how much we have changed the commissioner meeting and where it was when I first started and went to some fifty years ago or forty-some years ago, because nothing was really ever discussed, except down there at Tar Heel restaurant and lunch, or riding in the car down there and back and forth. You know, and you go, it was real, I mean, I wish we had some videos and audios of those commission meetings, 'cause nothing's ever discussed. And I really sincerely appreciate the fact that Linda has opened this meeting up and let aggravating, irritating people like me come in and express my opinion. Um, let me try. My notes are not in order no more. But this is what got us started. Over the, uh, talking about the EMS funding, Linda brought up the extra points, Jack brings up the extra points, uh, how are we gonna collect them? Well, this is something that just popped, you don't know, I know, uh, the county manager, maybe all of you have been mobbed on this. I just realized this in the last few weeks. I paid my trash bill, but the people that are not on county water are not paying. But there are people that are not on county water, not paying. And I had people to tell me, well, I never paid one. And we have as a county and previous county managers and this county manager and this board and the previous board, maybe we didn't think about it. I didn't, until I was talking, I was talking to this lady to start with, and I said, you're not on county water. She said, no. I said, well, how did they collect your trash bill? She said, say what? So then I found out, so I know there's people in the county of person that's already contacted some of y'all. But what I'm trying to, what I'm bringing up is the fact that if you got to go with this EMS thing and the water collection, we need to work together so that we're going to solve two problems at one time. And Linda brought it up, I know she knows it, Jack, and all the rest of you, we've got to solve this problem because it's unfair. And this has been said, I just wanted to reiterate that. Now, one thing that I, that, well, the last time I was here, there was a lot of talking with the rescue people and the salaries of the employees and blah, blah, blah. I was meeting last night with the county commissioner in the neighboring county, and this question came up that I asked him about his county. I would probably, not probably, a hundred percent. We have to have, when you, strong oversight of anything. And if we don't have strong oversight, it's not that I, I mean, Tom Morgan manages my three acres of town. I trust Tom Morgan with my money. I don't, I mean, he's an honest guy that we dealt with, and I don't think we have a problem in any of the rest of them. But you know from history, there's always, you know, Pitt makes his living defending criminals. And you can never have too much oversight. But the point is, I don't know whether or not this, as far as the salaries concerned, that we have need to say, well, Linda Hoffler makes this, Jack makes this. But everything that's going on in the rescues for, when you go in and spending our money, this amount of money, Henry, and I think this is where maybe Henry was sort of alluding to, is that we need good oversight. Not that we're trying to tell them how to do it, but y'all need to work on the oversight. Now, what I actually came for was to say, I didn't have, didn't think I had to bring this up. It was just the simplest little thing in the world, and I would like to hear y'all's opinion. I was going to run this by the boss, and I called the county manager, and she doesn't return my call, so I thought I'd come in here and bring it up to y'all. I did send her an email and say, I guess, you know, that I was used to people returning my calls, but I was arguing about that. But I am, but anyway. We brought up, of course, all this is still on camera, everybody's listening, but questioned Henry, Henry knew, but Henry about the relationship that he had maybe with some of the officers in the, in the county doing their job. I have a simple solution. And, but it would probably need Natalie to agree, if they want to do it, and you'll back it. A recording, legal recording. There may be some illegal recordings done, but they are not court permissible. But if someone comes in, whether it be Jack Orns or Linda Hoffler or Henry Jordan, and you think that they are requesting something that they shouldn't request, simply inform them, and of course, I got the county attorney to tell you how much of this is legal, but inform them, says, here, I've got the divorce recorder, you're going to be recorded. Now, what was it that you wanted to talk about? And I think this will eliminate any problem in the future that we have with anybody, any commissioner. And of course, we can do it with high rate customers. I mean, you know, somebody comes in, uses bad language, high rate, just bring out the recorder and tell them, but you got to tell them, right, Pitt, I mean, they're being recorded. And all of you do this all the time, I mean, I'll do it tomorrow morning, somebody out there will call me from the ballot, and they said, this court, this your call, this is going to be recorded, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, if you understand what I'm saying, do y'all agree with me that this will eliminate any problems as far as y'all being accused of doing things that maybe weren't exactly right? I don't expect y'all to do anything about it, but I did want to say, and I think that's all I had on my list. This is twice I've been to a commissioner meeting, I'll see y'all back next year. I hope that I got to go to Princeton, Missouri, I got to go to California, see the rid of trees. I got a lot of fish to catch. And every time, this is twice I've been over here, my blood sugar's dropping. Y'all saw me get up. I went around the courthouse and finally I said, Candy Hortons, I think it's got candy. I had to learn where the candy bowl was. So I went down there standing, I said, where's the candy bowl? So I got to come in here and eat candy. Thank you, bye.
Thank you. Thank you for being interested in the county. Okay, commissioners' comments? We'll start counting that with Commissioner Graylin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We certainly appreciate, I certainly appreciate everyone being here, particularly those that I recognize as friends and so happens that everybody's in that category. I wouldn't be saying anything if it wouldn't be within the realms of knowing what decisions we're making, what decisions are set forth and where they go. But we have to be reminded, and all of us, our colleagues here, county manager, that the poor decisions cause the crisis, and that's when we hear from you and we hear from others involved in the county and want to be involved in what we do. So we do look at those decisions, and we make the best decision possible to do our very best not to make poor decisions, as you see today. So thank you for being here.
We'll reiterate what Ray just said, I appreciate all of you being here today. And as Earl said in his speech there, we all trying to make sure everything is open and transparent. And we appreciate all the audience participation. We need all your ideas, and we appreciate any time that you make comments like that. And again, just thank you for coming.
I too thank everyone for coming. We do need to make sure our government is held accountable as to what we do and decisions that we make. And certainly by each one of you being here, that helps us know that you are interested, especially a lot of you who have left now. But just thank you for your participation. Decisions are not always easy to make, you got to use judgment, and that's what we, based on selecting our county officials, is based on many times, out of the judgment they have, so. Thank you for the board members we have, thank, I'm thanking for the county employees that we have. I think they do a good job, and I encourage them to continue to do the best job they can. I do have one other comment. In our last meeting, no, not our last meeting, we were informed by email that there was potential for a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar grant to accommodate repair of housing in Gates County. That also requires that we attend workshop, some of the housing committee members. And as our current policy is, we don't have provisions for reimbursement of travel. Since the housing committee is an entity that was endorsed by the commissioners, I would ask the board if they would prefer that travel expenses for mileage would be okay to submit under the commissioner's budget line of travel to get the information for the workshop that's going to help to apply for that, that grant that potentially help assistance of the county. So I would ask you all to consider that. You don't have to make a motion today, but certainly give some thought, maybe on the twenty first. We'll have a decision on that. Thank you.
Again, we have some good deliberation of that. And it's amazing that you have a thought on the topic. And thought is right here, and then you hear the deliberation. When we hear from the person who's at the podium helping us with the deliberation and your opinion moves from here to here or from here to there. So that tells me that participation and having the cohesive board that's willing to speak up, what's on their mind, what they're thinking, what they're hearing from the public is always kept. So thank you for the day for a healthy board, a good county manager, and excellent staff, and good departments, Gates County is blessed, and it's good meeting.
I too want to thank y'all who have stayed for the duration. And I'll, hopefully you have been informed about the issues before the county. And I do see, and you see democracy in action. We don't always agree, but, and we all, we listen to each other. And I'm not opposed to having a representative from Gatesville own it completely. But I do think there is, when you follow the rules you make, it's a problem. But anyway, I do encourage you to participate as a citizen in voting. That is one way that you can make changes in this country, and we do have a primary coming up on March the eighth. Fifteenth, okay. Okay, early voting starts, and I would encourage you to vote and tell your friends and families. If you don't vote, you don't need to complain about what, how the country goes. But listen, thank you for coming, I thank the board, I thank each of these individuals who served with me, thank the county manager and our county employees as they helped to run the county. And we all want the best for it. Have a good afternoon. We're not finished, but we want a bright night and go into closed session. But thank you again for coming. We want to take a...
Madam Chairman. One second, one thing I forgot to bring up to you, and now may be a good time. We have missions of mercy that was brought up at our health meeting. And the dentist of North Carolina ADO, we're going to set forth free dental plan for two days down in Derrick County Parks and Recreation. They have not given us a date, however. But I do have a telephone number if anyone's interested. It's free dental work, all the dental work last year, I think, says they've treated three thousand people from seven AM to four PM, no charge. It's called North Carolina Missions of Mercy. And their number is nine one nine, six seven seven, one three nine six. That's nine one nine, six seven seven, one three nine six. And they can give you the dates if they intend to do that.
Any website?
A website, I do not see a website.
And it's something of mercy.
It's North Carolina Missions of Mercy, the North Carolina Dental Society. They'll have eighty dental chairs, x-rays, sterilization, whatever.
If you will, let me make a copy of that, and then I can scan it and send it to the commissioners of them. Website, things like that.
Certainly.
Absolutely, there may be some qualifications to that.
Well, the, okay, you show up, you get treated.
Well, I do have two of those. Okay, listen, we're going to take a break, time for a full, good, closed session. I think all of us need that. The shred and all, I hate that. Okay, we're taking motion to, to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, eleven A, concerning legal and personnel matters.
Salute.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll enter take a motion to come out of closed session.
Salute.
Say.
Motion's been made, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Coming out, our first item or our only item coming out of closed session to instruct our county attorney to research and proceed. I do have doing this research on the Tom Jones study, what do we need to include that?
Tax.
I'll look into...
The research and proceed, tax.
Discussion, closing.
Taxes that we discussed in closed session.
Salute.
Say.
Motion's been made, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In this session, here in hand, all those... The motion to instruct the county attorney to proceed on the tax issues concerning our state, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, what, what, who's it? Oh, yeah. I'm getting tired. Okay, do I give a motion to, for recess?
Until?
Until March the twenty first, twenty fourth to sixteen.
Salute.
Say.
Motion's been made, a second, to recess to March twenty first, twenty sixteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.